Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Committee of the Whole for Monday, November 16th, 2020 to order. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interests? Seeing none, we'll move to approval of the agenda. Need a mover and seconder for approval of the agenda. Moved by councillor Frack, second by councillor Sharp. Moved by councillor Frack, second by councillor Sharp, resolved that the agenda for the Committee of the Whole meeting of November 16th, 2020 be approved. All in favor? Let's carry it. Up next, we're at number four, adoption of previous minutes, the DIA minutes of August 6th, 2020 and October 7th, 2020. Just get a mover and seconder to get it on the floor. Councillor Frack, councillor Cadwell. Seeing no discussion, moved by councillor Frack, second by councillor Cadwell, resolved that the DIA minutes from August 6th and October 7th, 2020 be received. All in favor? He didn't put his thing up. Let's carry it. Up next, we have administration and finance consent agenda. Need a mover and seconder? Moved by councillor Dunstall, second by councillor Frack. Moved by councillor Dunstall, second by councillor Frack, resolved that the Committee of the Whole hereby approves the following items, that the various consent items be approved and the recommendation is contained therein. Finance memo due just November 2nd, 2020 and PRO 20-02. All in favor? Let's carry it.
Mayor Jordan, sorry, I didn't get a chance. Can you repeat that motion that we just, was that 6.1A?
The 6.1A and B.
So I just had a question to ask about A. That's the Casablanca Corporate Centre. I'm wondering, can you, can you explain that a little to me?
Do you, Stephen's here, so we could talk about it with Stephen. We proved it, but Stephen?
Well, if I can, so I'd like to reconsider it. I didn't have a chance to vote on that and I didn't know, but I've read the agenda and it looks like there's a deferral of development charges to the tune of $500,000.
Yeah, I can.
That's correct. Our treasurer will comment this.
Yeah, yeah. So back in, in 2018, the town entered into a development charge deferral agreement with DeSantis for the Casablanca Corporate Centre. The deferral was to run for approximately two years and that two-year period is now expiring in December. The agreement allowed for a one-time extension for up to six months. And so we had a correspondence from, from Mr. DeSantis asking if we could defer it and the town is recommending the deferral for an additional six months. Due mainly to, you know, 2020 and 2020, we had COVID, there was halt to commercial construction. And so we thought the extra six months would be fair, given the circumstances.
So the question I had, normally this, then this might be to the planner, but um, so this residential development, Aqua Blue and Aqua Zula was built in an employment overlay and they had to build a certain amount of commercial space because of the employment overlay. And so they built a commercial building instead of, it's a mixed-use building. It's supposed to have like commercial on the main floor, residential on top. And then, so they didn't build any commercial on the main floor. Instead, they built this commercial building. And.
Actually, we, we, this is really out of order because we've actually passed this, so I allowed the treasurer to give some explanation, but really it should have been spoke about when. Well, you were here. The meeting moved forward. No one asked to be, for it to be lifted, so procedurally, I can't see.
It just breezed right by me. I mean, that happened fairly fast. Like, maybe we should take our time. I mean, I, so I spent my time to review the agenda. I read all this and.
Just, it should have been lifted, so unfortunately it wasn't.
Okay, fine, thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to administration and finance report 7.1A. Sarah?
See you, Mr. Mayor. So this report is to recommend an independent ward boundary and council composition review to be undertaken. So as a background, while council back in 2009 and 2016 did look at staff-led initiatives for realignments, the town really hasn't had an independent review nor a broad-based big consultation on its ward boundaries since 1993. Our current state indicates that the difference in electors between wards three and four have more than doubled from 2016 to 2020, resulting in a variance of approximately 43%. Therefore, as the difference is greater than 25%, this is a good opportunity for council to consider an independent review. Along as part of the review, it would also look at council composition to assess whether the number of elected officials can ensure that the community is properly represented in the decision-making process. So staff and researching the consultants that have been used by other municipalities for such reviews, it became apparent that two firms were the leaders in this space, one being Watson and Associates and the other Strategy Corp. The recommendation tonight is for council to retain Strategy Corp as their submission did come in $20,000 lower and would be led by the team of Michael Fenn and John Matheson. Having a third-party consultant undertake this review would definitely ensure that the process is impartial and approached without predetermined outcomes to withstand any LPAD appeals with this, with ward boundary review. We are hoping with tonight's approval to start the review as soon as possible to be completed in time for implementation in the 2022 elections. The consultants would be able to provide more specific information, but the targeted end date for this review, we're hoping it to be by end of May 2021. So thank you and any questions?
Thank you, Sarah, for your report. Councillor Frack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the clerk, the good report, Sarah. Thank you very much for that. Yeah, this is long, probably a long overdue. I know this has been put on the long finger now a couple of times over the last eight to 10 years. I'm really happy to see that you've endorsed the, what's the name of the group that Michael Fenn is a part of? He was the guy that was assigned by Queen's Park last year to look at amalgamation across Ontario of various parts of each region. So I'm thrilled that he's, he's a part of that corporation and I certainly will endorse this particular idea going forward. Certainly, the wards right now are a little bit out of whack and as we go forward with the growth in Grimsby, they'll probably be a little more out of whack. So it's probably good timing all around. So I look forward to going through this. The one thing I do want to add is I think that we should put a lot of onus and a lot of strength on what we get, the feedback we get from the community. This is their town, their taxpayers, their constituents. Although we will get a consultant to do the report and we will have a lot to say about that, I think we should put a lot of onus and a lot of strength in the comments that come back from the public and I would assume we'll have a public open house on this at some point in the future. Is that true, Sarah?
See you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we are looking to have two public consultation pieces.
Okay, thank you very much. Look forward to doing this.
Thank you.
Councillor Sharp?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. So looking at the numbers presented in the report today, I can see that Ward 1 and Ward 2 both have about 6,000 electors in them and that Ward 3 and 5 have, 3 has 5,000 and Ward 4 has 7,000. So it seems like it's simple enough to just level them out by moving 1,000 over to Ward 3 from Ward 4. So I question whether we need to spend $44,000 on a consultant. But if we change the ward boundaries, this hasn't happened since 1993, it should only be done once and it should be done right. So that we don't have to revisit it again in the near future. And we definitely need a professional consultant who is experienced in these type of boundary reviews. And that way we get a fair split of the wards with consideration for future growth. I have just one thing that if we can, I'd like to ask the consultant to change the wards as little as possible. I understand they're experts in this field. It's just that we'd rather not see wholesale change. I mean, Ward 4 is on the west end. I'd like it to stay on the west end and I don't want, you know, we, we only, we don't want to change for the sake of changing and, but I think it is needed for us to balance this out. So I'll support this motion and thank you for your report, Ms. Clerk.
So just to comment on that, we are looking at a development of a ward structure that will accommodate growth and population shifts for at least three municipal elections, so that will all be under consideration.
Great, thank you. Like, what my comment was that I just don't, I don't want to see Ward 4 become Ward 1 and like, it's an unnecessary amount of change, right? So like, the words kind of are as they already are and I'd like them to stay somewhat similar to that. And I think that's probably the, going to be a goal of the consultant. So if we can just note that, I'm fine. Thank you.
Councillor Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan, through you. Just a couple of comments. I'm really also very impressed that we've hired Mr. Michael Fenn. He's, as councillor Frack said, has a very, very strong background. He was actually the CIO for the city of Burlington when I was there, but anyways, yeah, I, this this study, I'm really looking forward to, and I guess also just having read through the report where it shows other, there's a couple other municipalities that have, if they have election at large, they don't have the ward system. So I'm just wondering if that might be, you know, just, just different options that we might look at with this report coming forward and I, I've just got to bring this up, but I know we're not there. There are municipalities that look at dual duty too, and I'm pretty sure that's not going to be on the, on the agenda or on the, on the part of the study. But it's always an interesting discussion. It's been going on for a number of years within the city of St. Catherine, it's down in the Niagara region a bit, but anyways, I look forward to the information coming through the study and thank again. Thank you, staff, for, for coming forward with this. It's gonna be, it's gonna be good information. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cadwell. The clerk's going to comment on the at-large because I think there is a component in that.
So the first step of the review would be the one-on-one with council. As part of council composition and ward boundary review, the matter of being elected at large is a consideration. So all that would be after they do the one-on-one, one-on-one with council, they'll bring a report, like an initial report to council with all the recommendations.
Councillor Dunstall, did you still want to speak or?
No, thank, the, I was answered, it was.
All right, perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, councillor Vane?
Just a word of caution. I know there's, it's been considered and will be discussed later, but I'm just going to say right from the start, I do not support council at large because then you're really eliminating the opportunities for many people to run. As the mayor himself would know, based on the amount of money you would have to spend to cover the whole town is considerable. And then you're really limiting the field, the people who can afford to run and that's not fair to other people. So I won't support any type of council at large.
Councillor Frack?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for clarifying that, Sarah. That was one of the questions I was going to ask you. I, you know, we're a little bit premature. I mean, I think we should, we should not put any parameters on what this consultant is going to do. I mean, I would, I wouldn't, I would assume that if this, if there's a councillor at large question comes into, into, into being in this, in this report, that they will also look at the areas which councillor Vane talked about a moment ago. Yes, it would require a lot more canvassing and across, across Grimsby, but we need to leave it all open. I think we need to put it all on the table, let the, let the consultant come back with all the parameters of all the possibilities and let's discuss them from there. And I believe we are going to get an opportunity, as Sarah just said, that to talk with these consultants before they go out into the community and do their thing. So, so I think we just need to be careful, put too many parameters around at this point in time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Ritchie?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Although I support this concept, again, the amount of money that we're going to spend to look at, to look at this in these times, even though it may be there in a contingency reserve budget, I mean, we sit here and we talk about spending, everybody complains about, you know, we're spending too much money here, too much money there. I think that that with the development that's happening in our municipality at this time, that this might be better served a year or two years down the road. I think it should be, we should be looking at deferring this. I'm not going to support this at this time because I think that, you know, to look at how many votes people are getting and so forth, that I think, just think that we could better spend our money at this time. Thanks.
Councillor Sharp?
Thanks, Mayor Jordan. I agree both with councillor Frick and with councillor Ritchie. One that I, I want to clarify, I don't want to set constraints on the consultant. Michael Fenn is qualified and he will make his findings as, as he's qualified to do. I'm sure that he would just, I just want to assure the residents in town that we're not going to make a wholesale change, but with that assurance in mind, I also agree with councillor Ritchie that it's a $44,000 that we're going to spend on this, but it can only be done in four-year intervals because it has to be done like before an election. So, so if we don't do it now before the 2022 election, then, then we wait till 2026 election and our numbers aren't that far off. Like, we have one word. So the words are basically average about 6,000, right? And two words are at about 6,000 and then one word is at 5,000 and one word is at 7,000. That's Ward 3 and Ward 4. So they're not far off, right? You have 1,000 more people in Ward 4 and you have 1,000 less people in Ward 3. And in the future, that might change as Ward 4 grows. So this is something that we could possibly wait until 2026 to do. And I just want to ask the clerk if she has any opinion on that?
So if council wants to implement any of the changes by the 2022 elections, all final, the final bylaw has to be approved by December 31st, 2021. So if it is deferred tonight, it would be deferred to the 2026 election.
So my, my question is, do you, could this be deferred until 2026 considering that it's only 1,000 people more in Ward 4 and 1,000 people less in Ward 3? And I mean, it's only $44,000, but it's $44,000.
That would be the decision of council, whether you would prefer for the 2022 election or defer it to 2026.
How many, is there, is there a guideline to how many electors can, it can be off? Like, because we're not that unbalanced, but is there any kind of, like, where, is there a post that we pass or if maybe planning could give us some idea of what our growth will be in Ward 4 and when we'll pass the post?
So under the municipal, sorry, sorry, under the Elections Act, it is councils, council can decide whether to divide the wards or re-divide the wards. However, in the Supreme Court case of the Carter case, it is suggested for effective representation, there shouldn't be a discrepancy of greater than 25%. And as stated, we do have a variance of 43%.
But that variance is only between Ward 4 and Ward 3 and it's like about 20% variance between Ward 3 and Ward 2 and Ward 1. And then again, it's about a 15 or 20% variance. So like, out on the ends of the, of the curve, Ward 3 and Ward 4 are 1,000 votes up and 1,000 votes down, 2,000 votes difference. But the average is about 6,000 and we're like looking at 5,000 versus 6,000 and 7,000 versus 6,000, plus four years of growth. So I, I'd like to maybe ask my colleagues if, if they would consider postponing this until 2026. Maybe we have another round if anyone has an opinion on that.
Councillor Bothwell, I see that you came in. So you haven't spoke yet and then councillor Cadwell?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I'm very supportive of this exercise and I was asking about it actually even before the 2018 election, when in 2016, the previous council recognized the significant difference already at that time between the wards and that they were going to, they actually had a timeline to bring it forward for this next one, but didn't get around to it. So to the 2018 election, it's evident that the workload and the amount of electors that are represented by the wards is significantly different when we're looking at 43% above, when 25, when a discrepancy of 25% is acceptable to do a ward review. So looking at 43%, we're already significantly above what the threshold would be to do this type of a review. And it was anticipated it would be needed. So I think now is the time to do it. It is coming, as I understand, out of the budget contingency reserve. So from what I understand, maybe the clerk can clarify that that isn't a tax impact, a direct tax impact, considering it's out of reserves. And, and I would, I would strongly support that we do this now and we get it right because waiting another six years to do it or four years to do it is not going to be fair to the wards and the representatives that we end up having in, in our wards, especially Ward 4, having to bear the burden of a newer neighborhood with a significant high electoral population with significant new needs. Because it seems to be when new people move in, there seems to be, as I found in my first year, a significant influx of questions and concerns as new residents move into a neighborhood. So I think it's timely. I'm going to support it. And if the clerk could just clarify how the funding source is, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Sorry, our treasurer, Stephen's just going to clarify that for us. That's.
Yeah, councillor Bothwell, with regard to your question, yeah, the funds would be coming out of the budget contingency reserves. I guess there's no tax levy impact.
All right, councillor Cadwell hasn't, has spoken twice already. So councillor Vardy has not spoke. So councillor Vardy, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I, I think in reading the report, it's not just about the numbers, but there's, there's communities and we have various sort of communities that hang together throughout, throughout Grimsby. I mean, the people on, on the mountain have sometimes very interests that are really specific to being up on the mountain. And then, you know, we've got, we've got people near the lake and so it's more than just, it's more than just the numbers and finding a balance between numbers. And personally, I, I think it's a timely housekeeping piece. And I would like to hear from an expert, what kind of options could be proposed? You know, before I settle on something that is yay or nay or don't, you know, tell you right now, don't want to go down that road. I'd like to hear what an expert suggests and also get a sense of what other communities are doing. And this way we make sure that our town gets, gets sufficient representation and the right kind of representation. So I'm, I'm for this study. I think it's very timely and I think we should move forward. It's a matter of, of doing our, just part of our governance due diligence. Thank you.
Councillor Dunstall is the only one who hasn't spoken on this. So councillor Dunstall?
Thank you, your worship, through you to our treasurer. I just want a little more contingency, what, what other things we would be using it for and whether postponing this to 2026 would have any merit on the budget because I, I'm in favor of supporting this and I think the $44,000 coming out of budget contingency is, is not big dollars. And if it's not going to have any impact on the levy or anything else that we're doing, I think it's safe to say that it's a prudent thing to do at this time. Our treasurer?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, so it won't have an impact on the tax levy. The budget contingency reserve is meant for something just like this, where your approved council's approving something outside of the budget. So the budget's already been approved and an item, this item wasn't included in the 2020 budget. So there's no funding attached to it. So then we use the budget contingency reserve to approve items that are, occur outside of the budget cycle.
Do you, do you, do you see any concerns about using this at this time where there might be other things that come up in the next year that would have impacts on being able to do something because we've used this money when we maybe saved it? I guess that's the only other question.
Yeah, no, I don't have any concerns with it. You know, I, I don't know if I'd want to add it to the levy. So I think, you know, taking it from reserves is probably the, is probably the best way to go, especially considering, you know, looking towards the 2021 budget. I think that this is the best way to go to fund it from users.
Thank you.
Councillor Vane's the only one on the list that hasn't spoken twice yet. So councillor Vane?
Yeah, I just, I want to say in hindsight, well, in hindsight, now that I've heard what councillor Sharp said, I have to agree with him. I, I'm thinking that I, I get the idea. I was one of the people who brought this forward to have the council size looked at to possibly reduce it, but having said that now, I'm thinking that in this time of COVID, I, I've seen some members of council bring up motions and argue over $4,000 and stuff like that. And yet we have no problem throwing this kind of money at something again to do with council. I think we're sending the wrong message, especially to somebody who's out of work for six months and they're looking at us and saying, you're spending more money on council. I, I think the optically, it's not going to look good to the public. And I think it's not going to make that much of a difference as councillor Sharp said, we're talking 1,000 people. I mean, we knew what we were running for. We knew what we got and so to suddenly try and make your load lighter doesn't seem right. That seems wrong, especially to the people who've been out of work for six months. So I will not be supporting it at this time. Thank you.
Seeing everyone's who's on the speakers list has spoken twice. I'm just going to call the question. Oh, councillor, councillor Cadwell, you haven't spoken twice? I'm sorry. I just have, I guess my notes are wrong down here. Councillor Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan, for allowing me to speak a second time. Just a little bit of history here. In the past, we've always had our former town clerk, Mrs. Mrs. Sodi Hazel Easton used to do it when it was brought a couple of times in my, my terms on council. I like that we're.
Um, I like that we're, we're going to be doing it with a uh, a professional, a very talented uh, individual. And I I think it's something we need to do because uh, there's going to be a lot of growth in the future. And to wait to put it off, uh, I don't know, I I just think now is the time. I think it's just to to get to be prepared uh, for the future with this respect. It is a coming out of the uh, the budget contingency. And uh, I've got the information from Stephen today regards to how much is in the budget contingency. So I I will be supporting this uh, this resolution at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cadwell. Just a couple of uh, comments before I call the question. This uh, this was uh, last done in nineteen ninety three. Uh, so it's well overdue and the region um, will have the the population projections all the way up to twenty forty one. They'll soon they soon be doing twenty fifty one. So I think we can um, we can can uh, do this uh, um, study uh, with uh, really good uh, information and 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 um, good statistics. So um, as the clerk said, it will last for um, three rounds of voting. And it's coming out of our reserves and that's what reserves are there for. It's uh, waiting till twenty twenty six is just going to magnify the discrepancies discrepancies we have. And it's just not effective representation for the general public. So I just need a mover and seconder on the resolution. Counselor Dunstall, Counselor Frake. Moved by Counselor Dunstall, second by Counselor Frake. Resolve that report TC twenty dash zero six dated November sixteen, twenty twenty be received. And that the town of Grimsby ward boundary and council composition review. Terms of reference attached to this report is appendix A be approved. And that the staff be authorized to award a contract in the amount of forty four thousand dollars to the firm Strategy Corp for consulting services to understate undertake award boundary and council competition review. And that the town of Grimsby ward boundary and council composition review be funded from the budget contingency reserve and that staff be authorized to give effect there too. Recorded vote. Counselor Bothwell?
Yes.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yes.
Counselor Frake?
Yes.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yes.
Counselor Ritchie?
No.
Counselor Sharp?
Yes.
Counselor Vane?
No.
Counselor Vardy?
Yes.
And myself, I'm a yes, so that is carried. Up next, we have uh, report FCR twenty dash zero nine, open air fires. Chief Thompson. Yeah, we're not, we're not getting any audio. It's working now.
Is it working now, sir? Your worship?
Yes, it is.
Sorry about that, sir. Let let's try that again. Is it working now?
Yes, we're good now.
Okay, I've lost my headset. Okay, I'm going to have to do it on speakers. Sorry about that.
That's okay. You're ready to roll now.
Anyways, your worship, uh, counsel, thank you again. Um, back in May of twenty twenty, discussion of open air fires was being discussed. And of course, a petition came to my attention and created interest in this topic. Uh, then the pandemic had had struck and other priorities took over and we had to deal with those. So between that time in October, I was able to gather some statistics from other bylaws and other services, uh, bigger fire departments. Then a notice of motion on November second was uh, authorized counsel to um, council approved, authorized the fire chief to begin a review of the current bylaw. I immediately, I immediately just started discussion with our municipal solicitor. And just recently, as the other day, I received a preliminary report. So I haven't had an opportunity to review it myself too much at this time. Um, so. While the summer, going through the summer, there was a lot of public engagement. Our our fire complaints are up significantly, um, were double as of this year. And it's no doubt that people are staying home. So there is a lot of interest in this and it led me to the report that I've put out today to start a public consultation. I believe that we should take our time and not rush into this. And we need feedback from our community as well as council. So your worship, I'm open for any questions.
Great, thank you for your report, uh, Counselor Sharp.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan, uh, to the fire chief, through the mayor. I think it's good that we're engaging the public in consultation about a fire permit system in Grimsby similar to Lincoln. I just want to remind everyone that these permits, if approved, are going to allow small, safe fires in your backyard and only if you have a minimum of ten to twelve feet clearance in all directions from your fire pit, which many properties in Grimsby do have. And sir, that hasn't been confirmed. We will decide what the clearances are during this consultation process. But this will not allow large and unsafe bonfires or the burning of brush, leaves, grass clippings, et cetera, which cause nuisance smoke. And Grimsby Fire Department will still continue to find unsafe and nuisance fires as they do right now. So this proposed permit system, if approved, will help educate residents and will help regulate the bonfires that we all know are already happening in Grimsby, whether they are allowed or not. And it will generate some revenue, which can be used for more enforcement of the unsafe and or nuisance fires in Grimsby. So I look forward to hearing from the public and and I, you can be sure that I will um, post about this on my social media and and you can find links there where you can participate in our public consultation. And I look forward to seeing you. I look forward to hearing more about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sharp, uh, Counselor Frake.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, to Chief Thompson. Um, what type of restrictions do we currently have in place for open fires in people's backyards? Is there any kind of, we have any restrictions or rules right now?
Um, through you, Mayor, thank you, Counselor Frake, for the question. Yes, we do. Uh, currently in the urban area, there is no open air fires allowed whatsoever. Um, so we're divided by the official plan. We have suburban rule in urban area. So urban area is considered, you know, the density of town or the uh, in the bylaws does state anything below the escarpment, that's a residential home is zoned by the bylaw. So any of that is that's in the suburban area, say west of Casablanca, that we considered suburban, but the res, it's zone residential, so they cannot burn either, open air fires.
So uh, uh, on that note, um, so right now there are no rules in place for urban Grimsby.
Through you, Mayor, correct.
So there's no, so how do, are there, do you give fines? I mean, how do we give fines if that's the case? Or do we?
So through you, Mayor, um, Counselor Frake, thank you. Most of the time it's a public education campaign. There's so many new residents coming to town that have come from out of town. And when you have stores like Canadian Tire and other places from out of town selling chimeneas, they believe they can just burn. So we do a public education campaign, but there is times that enforcement needs to be uh, handled and there is mechanisms in place at this time for enforcement.
You know, you noted also that there's been a number, uh, quite a few calls out for for open fires in in the in the past year, I guess, I assume that since COVID came into place because more people are at home looking for things to do. Uh, so the the uh, the callouts that you've had, are they, are they more in the urban area or are they up in the mountain? Or like, can you give us some idea where those callers have been and and the ex, the extent of some of these fires or why you were called out?
Yes, through you, Mayor. Um, as of this year, we've been to forty three open air fires and forty of them have been in the urban area and three have not.
That's very disturbing to hear that number. Uh, were there any dramatic situations where, I mean, was it just somebody complaining about smoke? Or were there, did the fire get out of control or somebody burned their marshmallows or something? What what happened?
Through you, Mayor, most of them are complaints and they're due to uh, nuisance of the smoke.
Yeah, I would have a concern with with uh, if that many callouts in in the urban area. I mean, I I don't know. I mean, I live in in a residential area and I don't think I would appreciate my neighbor having an open air fire in his backyard, uh, which is, will be very close to her, to my fence. Um, so I guess we'd have to be very careful how this bylaw is worded and what the rules are around having these fires. So I look forward to uh, seeing the the rollout of what we're going to be doing. Thank you, Chief Thompson, appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Cadwell.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan, through you to the chief. And uh, thanks, Chief, for bringing some of this information forward. Only question I have, when the bylaw comes in place, will there be a uh, I'll just call and say an attachment of a, it's a pilot project? Or will this be a a ongoing regular type of bylaw? What's your uh, what's your consensus to that, uh, Chief?
Uh, through you, Mayor, thank you, Counselor Cadwell, for the question. Um, at this time, I've been considering doing a pilot for a year, but I'd like to consult with our lawyers a few more times. We just had a preliminary discussion and they're offering up some new um, I guess, their observation from around the province too. So I'd like to hear what they have to say before I do come back with my recommendation.
Good. Thank you.
Counselor Ritchie.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you said you had forty three open uh, open burn complaints this year that you attended, which means is obviously there's a bunch more that you never got complaints on. But uh, to be honest, that number isn't that bad. Um, in my profession, as you know, I I work in the city of Burlington. And with COVID, the numbers are are extremely up, way up, uh, quite a bit, as many people are staying home. I think this is an excellent approach. Uh, get the community involved, see what it is. And as I've told my constituents, because I've had just as many people phone in for this bylaw as against, I really look forward to your recommendation. And again, our fire chief is the expert in this and you know that it can be quite a burden on a volunteer department going and having to respond to these type of calls because it's a fire call. You can't just send one or two people, you need to send a pump with water just in case, you never know what the situation is. And it can be a burden on the volunteers. I really look forward to your report. And uh, just to put it out there, I will be supporting what your report says. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Sharp.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan, uh, to the chief and and to kind of respond to some of the comments. So this bylaw, if approved, like it'll allow small, safe bonfires and you'll only be allowed to burn clean, dry lumber, right? So you can buy it at the gas station, you know, they sell those mesh bags, about six bucks. You get lumber, some people burn it in their stoves inside and some people, um, you could, you could have a small, you could have a tire rim buried in the ground, you know, eighteen inches, small fire. And we don't know the exact distances, but there will be distances around the fire. You can't have it within like probably twelve feet of your deck, twelve feet of your fence. So like, if you picture a a twenty four foot radius, like a big circle, it's so there's a lot of properties that just wouldn't be allowed. They have a deck, they have a pool, they have a shed. Um, it's too close to the property line. And in some areas like Counselor Freak's neighborhood, it's a little more dense. And and you just might not be allowed to have a bonfire permit there. But there's a lot of areas in Grimsby, when you're talking where I live, I don't even live in the urban boundary, but I do live in a residential area west of Casablanca. We're on eighty foot lots, they're all a hundred feet deep, some of them are more than a hundred feet deep. I have like a fifty five by eighty foot backyard, it's big. And um, it's just open, I have some gardens and raspberries and things like that there. But um, there's a lot of other areas, you talk about Garden Drive and um, they have a hundred and fifty foot deep lots and and out in my end of the woods, Kelson Road. And um, th- there's a lot of, I I don't want to have to list them all off, but of areas where you could have a small contained bonfire in a chimenea or in one of those fire trays where you burn only clean, dry lumber. You don't get to like burn your green bin or your or waste like that. And if you do, we'll use the money from these permits to pay our firefighters to come out and give you a fine, right? So I want to just reassure the residents that if we approve something like this, it, safety and um, compliance will will be utmost and and we will be enforcing the bylaws. So, thanks.
Seeing no further questions, I have Counselor Sharp as the mover. I need a seconder. Counselor Frake? Moved by Counselor Sharp, second by Counselor Frake. Resolve that report FCR twenty dash zero nine dated November sixteen, twenty twenty be received. And that committee approves the Grimsby Fire Department to engage in a public consultation survey on open air fires and that the acting fire chief continued to consult with municipal solicitors on bylaw twelve dash forty being a bylaw to regulate the setting of open air fires in the town of Grimsby. And the staff provide recommendations on open air fires in quarter one of twenty twenty one. All in favor? That's carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Now we're on section seven point two.
Mayor, if I could speak to this?
Yep, CIO, uh, going to speak on that.
Yes, thank. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just, we did an internet and Brandon did a quick report for council to consider um, some of the comments in the report on the upcoming resolution on a vehicle parking permit review for Grimsby Beach. Um, I did attend, I did work.
This is actually the um, integrity commissioner.
Oh, I'm sorry, jumped the gun there. Sorry.
Is anyone doing that? All right, Counselor Vardy?
It's my motion. Um, I I I've brought this motion forward because I think um, there's been a tendency with some complaints to um, abuse the integrity commissioner process uh, for means other than what it was intended. I think some complaints coming through have amounted to little more than harassment. Um, and I think that there is a, there is a cost to these complaints. And I feel that they uh, they take away from uh, the important business that we have to do. Uh, and in moving forward, I would like to make a friendly amendment uh, to my motion that would also include that um, the cost of all complaints be uh, be made public. So anything that we're paying the integrity commissioner should be made made public. I think there's been uh, too many of these uh, vexatious complaints. And uh, we need to put an end to that. And I'm hoping that through this motion, by making them completely transparent, people will only move forward and they'll stand by the conviction of of what they feel is wrong. Um, so if you want to accuse someone of something, be upfront. Uh, put your name to it and and let it be known. Because I think uh, there could be a tendency to hide behind these complaints. And uh, I do honestly feel that some of them have just become a a vehicle for harassment. And I do honestly feel that some of them have just become a, a vehicle for harassment. So I don't know if anyone has any, anyone else has anything to say, but, um, that's why I'm bringing this, uh, forward now.
All right, Counselor Vardy, I have you as the mover. We just need a seconder for this resolution. Counselor Frank. And Counselor Sharp, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor Jordan. So I just have some comments and I just want to clarify, this motion is about the code of conduct for our counselors. It applies to the way that counselors conduct themselves when dealing with the general public, town staff and with other counselors. So far, all of the complaints have been made by a counselor against another counselor. If a complaint was made by a person in the community or a member of our staff, we would want them to be certain that it would remain confidential, so they would feel safe when speaking to the clerk about the issue. Passing a motion like this might inhibit community members or staff from filing legitimate complaints for fear of the complaints being made public, even if they are resolved or withdrawn by the complainant. However, we have had complaints made by counselors against other counselors. And all I can say is that counselors need to stop making complaints about each other simply because they disagree. We are wasting taxpayer money, fighting with each other, and the results of these complaints have been either invalid or minor he said, she said complaints that have cost a taxpayer upwards of twenty thousand dollars. For the record, I have not made any complaints against my colleagues. And if I had an issue with a fellow counselor, I would try to resolve it by speaking to them personally. I see this motion as being counterproductive to that end, so I'm not in favor of it. Thank you.
Counselor Cadwell.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Jordan. Through you, I'd like to hear from our, uh, our town, our clerk as to, uh, under the municipal act, how the process and procedures are, as this has been brought forward, uh, by Counselor Vardy. As we're doing things now, are we, are we complying under the municipal act? To the, to.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So this was brought, it's actually, it comes through the Code of Conduct bylaw, uh, or Integrity Commissioner, I believe a month ago brought a new Code of Conduct. And as part of that bylaw, he included a section where any vexatious or frivolous complaints are not released uh, to the public. So it is a bylaw that has been passed by council with that clause in it.
What about the privacy aspect to, uh, to complaints and that? Has, has Counselor Sharp mentioned whether it's from the public or from counselor to counselor?
So, uh, for the privacy aspect, the Integrity Commissioner controls that. He decides what gets released to the public or not. That would be under the jurisdiction of the Integrity Commissioner and his decision at the end.
Counselor Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just like to clarify one thing, and that is, uh, it isn't always to Counselor Sharp's point. There, it isn't always necessarily a counselor to a counselor. I know there are cases, I know at least one, where, uh, vexatious integrity complaints were made. And the coward, whoever he is or she is, didn't stand up and put their name to it and just withdrew it afterwards. So, uh, just, just to get the point out there without, without going to the, to the second part of the integrity complaint process. So I just want to say that it is always about counselors to counselors. There's other, there's other possibilities as well, but some people stand behind those things, uh, just to be hidden, but get their point across in a vexatious way, which is really unfair to the person who's being accused. So I just want to make that statement, uh, just to let you know that it isn't just always a counselor to a counselor.
Counselor Ritchie.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I have some questions regarding this. Um, so I heard that we just paid our Integrity Commissioner one month for this, this bylaw that this is covered in. Is that correct to our clerk?
Yes, he did, uh, I believe it was, uh, last month where we, uh, he brought a new Code of Conduct.
Thank you. So with that, um, with this motion coming forward, have we asked for any opinion from the, uh, Integrity Commissioner on this? In regards to you looking at changing this, so a professional opinion?
No, we have not.
So again, in my opinion, we sit there now and look and, uh, we spent a lot of dollars on this. We spent money, spent taxpayers' dollars on this, and now we're looking to change, uh, a professional opinion without any advice from any professionals whatsoever. Uh, I think that in myself, that would be, we're looking at, again, wasting some, some, uh, some taxpayers' dollars that we just had this done a month ago. I will not be supporting it.
Counselor Bothwell.
I can understand some of the concerns, but I also can understand, uh, as, as the recipient of, um, these types of complaints, uh, especially the frivolous and vexatious ones can be filed. And then a lot of work can go into, into a response and then the complainant can withdraw it um, after, you know, two months, three months of, of going through the process. And I think we do need to make, we need to be transparent as to how often this is happening as in numbers. Considering that we all made a commitment to each other to try to work together, uh, in a positive way moving forward. And I think that, uh, for the public to see that we're doing that, I think it's important for transparency that we at least declare the number of complaints and whether they are withdrawn, um, lost, whatever, um, frivolous, vexatious and costs, ongoing costs. So I think we just need a reporting mechanism to continue to, be vigilant and, and seeing, um, whether we have a pattern and whether we have to address this in another manner if it continues. So, um, although I understand where, um, Counselor Vardy is coming from with, uh, looking for full disclosure uh, to the public, I understand the privacy issues and the concerns that the Integrity Commissioner may have with that. But I think that if there was a way, um, Counselor Vardy to look at this, to somehow just have an accounting of incidents, um, and costs that would serve a purpose to some point. Um, that's just, that's just my thought. Thank you.
Counselor Vane.
Excuse me, um, a- again, another motion to spend more money on council issues. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm going to let my, uh, residents know in my area who've been out of work for six months that we're really working hard with the tax dollars. I think this is a waste of money. Uh, you want to sit here and call others out and say the complaints are vexatious. Unfortunately, due to privacy concerns, I can't talk about a lot of these issues, but I, uh, uh, I do know that some of these issues are being brought forth on behalf of complaints received by staff. Um, and the staff are terrified to put complaints forward. So, you know, I mean, we can sit here and try and, as using Counselor Vardy's words, harass each other into not putting in complaints. But if we don't have grounds, we shouldn't put in complaints. Because an Integrity Commissioner takes he said, she said, and says, okay, I'm going to be a judge instead of doing an investigation and say that's vexatious, I don't agree with that. I think there's a lot of fault with the the Commissioner process right now. I've seen other towns that have Intergreats that actually investigate the complaints. I have not seen that in our town. So I think there's a bigger issue here than us spending more money on, we're passing more motions or whatever else. The process is there. It's the same as the criminal justice system. You can lay criminal charges, you can lay file suits, whatever. The point is, is there's a bigger process here. We have the process in place. It's an option that's available to us, the public, whatever else, as Counselor Sharp said, and I totally support Counselor Sharp on this. We're wasting time. Let's move on. Thank you.
Counselor Sharp.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. I just wanted to follow up and, um, if, if I could have the treasurer or I guess treasurer confirm. But the costs to these complaints are not private. They are, they're public. So I asked the treasurer if he could give me like an accounting of the complaints. So we had six, um, reports come to town council on July twentieth and, um, they were all made by counselors against counselors. And, um, so I asked the treasurer if, um, if I could have like an accounting of that. And, um, and he sent me like over a list, like it was actually the bill from, uh, from our Integrity Commissioner, and it tells you how many hours were spent on each claim. The claims are all numbered. And, um, normally there'd be no name attached to it, but since there was reports here, you can actually see the name who made the complaint, who the complaint was against and the complaint and the, and the finding of the complaint. And so I actually took it and I put it into, um, Excel. I'm a Excel guy. And, um, so you can see based on each counselor, because most of the complaints were made by more than one complaint by the same counselor. And, um, you know, some of them, three, four thousand dollars each, like minimum three, two point five hours at three hundred and fifty dollars an hour per complaint. And, um, a lot of them were like ten, eleven hours at three hundred and fifty dollars an hour. And so, um, this is public information. Anyone can have it. I, I asked the treasurer if I could share it and he said, yeah, it's part of the public record. So, so I think that, um, if I want to just go back to what I closed with earlier, council needs to stop making complaints against other counselors, right? And I think that most of the complaints that we made were found invalid. They weren't actually breaches of the code of conduct. And the two that were found to be breaches of the code of conduct were, they, they were not, they were minor breaches and they were, they were recommendation for an apology. And the mover of this motion actually moved that we all say kumbaya and, and just continue to get along. And, and so now it's like, at risk of making it more difficult for legitimate complaints to come forward, we're, we're going to make it more difficult for people to make legitimate complaints. Um, that, that's all I have to say, and I will be voting against this, um, motion. Thank you.
Counselor Vardy.
Yeah, I'd just like to, uh, clarify a couple of things. Uh, there's no cost to my motion. Uh, I know that Counselor Vane raised the issue of money. Um, and having been the target of a frivolous and vexatious, um, uh, Integrity Commissioner complaint, it, uh, it really does concern me that this process is being used. And if this were a court of law, you would have to, uh, you, you can't make complaints anonymously. And that I think that if you legitimately feel that you have a complaint, whether you're a person in the public or a counselor or a town employee, then you need to step up, be known, be named, make your complaint. Um, that, that's the way it works in the, in a court of law. Why should it be done here any different? And I do think that there have been, um, a rash of unnecessary, uh, complaints. And I think that, uh, I, I, I don't think we can just sort of say, um, we've tried the kumbaya method. Uh, it lasted less than one hour, as I recall. And I think the counselors know who you are. Uh, I think the counselors know who you are that file complaints and withdraw them, or others that file complaints and withdraw them for the purpose of just, um, aggravating somebody. Um, I think that you, you have to, if you're going to do that, it's an, it's a, it's significant. So if you're going to accuse someone of something, you, you have to come forward and say who you are. If you're going to do it, I mean, that's just, otherwise you, you can't hide and, and then, put people to the, to the trouble of having to deal with these, you know, have people lose their energy, uh, having to do, deal with this, having to cost the taxpayers money doing these kinds of things, because even the complaints that are put in and withdrawn also cost money. So I want to put in, I want, I, I agree with Counselor Sharp. I think we, I'd like to see an end to these complaints. But given that how, how we responded after the last rash of complaints, that, um, certain counselors continue to, um, to move in that direction. I don't see many other alternatives to try and make this stupidity stop. Thank you.
Counselor Bothwell.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I, I did note that the clerk noted, uh, that I had that information request in for the number of, filings, whether, uh, they were withdrawn or not withdrawn and the costs, um, at the last meeting. So I just wondered if the clerk could maybe mention, um, if, when she might expect to have that information available since the July twentieth meeting, what's come forward, how many? Thank you.
I need to bring it at the first meeting in January so I can close off twenty-twenty and bring up full, uh, stats.
That's perfect. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Counselor Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, maybe I'll leave my comments for another time. I just find that talking about this subject gets me a bit riled up, being that I've received probably the most vexatious and first report or complaint, uh, since this council was put together. And I do commend, uh, Counselor Sharp for withholding, uh, and being more sensible about this. But I also find there's a, there's a bit of a hypocritical attitude towards these things and I hear some of that coming out tonight and it's really unfortunate. Uh, anyway, thank you. I just wanted to say that and let's move forward, try to move forward again.
Seeing no further discussion, I'll read the resolution. Moved by Counselor Vardy, second by Counselor Frank. Whereas a council, we are committed to openness and transparency. Whereas Integrity Commissioner complaints are serious undertakings which reflect on the behavior of council members. And whereas frivolous and vexatious complaints are costly to taxpayers, be it resolved that all Integrity Commissioner complaints, whether one lost, a draw or withdrawn or deemed not to be further investigated, be made public. So that transparency is achieved and frivolous and vexatious complaints are not proffered and the cost of all complaints be made public. Uh, recorded vote. Counselor Bothwell.
Yeah.
Counselor Dunstall.
Yes.
Counselor Frank.
Yes.
Counselor Cadwell.
No.
Counselor Ritchie.
No.
Counselor Sharp.
No.
Counselor Vane.
No.
Counselor Vardy.
Yes.
And myself, I'm a yes, so that is carried. All right, moving on to, uh, section nine, uh, section nine point one, A. Report DPW twenty dash forty-one, a board of contract, DPW twenty dash zero-two dash three-two-zero-one-two-eight, DPW twenty dash three-two-zero-one-two-nine and DPW twenty dash zero-two dash three-two-zero-one-three-zero. Northeast corridor shoreline protection work. Uh, Brandon.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
Uh, so the purpose of this report is to obtain council's authorization toward the shoreline protection, cut, excuse me, construction contract to Cambridge Landscape and Construction Limited. The project includes, uh, the construction of armor stone revetment structures at the end of the sixth and ninth street road allowances. And at a storm sewer outlet structure, which is located between, uh, ninth and seventh street. Purpose of the structures are, is to protect the town infrastructure from long-term effects of erosion caused by wave actions in Lake Ontario. And this is in support of council strategic priority initiatives towards erosion protection in the, uh, environmental theme. Uh, as we mentioned in the report, town invited property owners adjacent to the property area to participate in a com- comprehensive project tender. Essentially, owners who wanted to participate hired a shoreline engineer to design erosion protection for their own properties, which were then incorporated into a larger tender for both the town and private works. The low bid from Cambridge Landscaping and Construction Limited was for a total project cost of six hundred and two thousand, three hundred and nine dollars uh, and change, uh, with the town's portion of the work being for four hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars of the total cost and those costs exclude HST. Uh, works are anticipated to begin sometime in the new year, uh, once the approvals have been. Once the approvals have been obtained from the appropriate agencies, project's supposed to be funded a hundred percent from the federal gas tax fund and the work is well within the amount we had forecast to be allocated towards this work in 2021. And I'm happy to take.
Great. Thank you very much for the report, Brandon. And congratulations on being director of public works now. Councillor Frick. Oh, you're welcome. Councillor Frick, you're up.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I would I wanted to also echo that too, Brendan. Congratulations on your promotion to director. Well deserved. I just have a quick question. Is there, is there any, in terms of shoreline protection, is there any grants that come from the federal government other than the gas taxes and so on and so forth? Is there any other way we can, we can get money to protect the, you know, the shoreline? Because I mean, the lake is under the responsibility of the federal government, right? Under lakes and oceans, is that right?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So that there are a number of grants that we look at. There is Ontario, the OCIF grant that we had used in the past. Right now, we are using the gas, gas tax that we get from the federal government and that there is a disaster mitigation component of that, which allows us to use the funding for erosion protection on the lake. So in terms of ownership, essentially the way crown land works in in with respect to the lakes is we own the land up to where the water level is. And as the water or as the land erodes and the water takes over, that land becomes the crown land. So we are responsible for protecting our property and and our infrastructure that's on on the lakefront. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you for clarifying that. The other, the other question I had in follow up to that is, you noted in your report that some of the residents who own property leading up to the shoreline is going to be responsible for for some of the work that you're going to be doing. How how do you, how do you calculate that? I mean, I mean, it sounds like it could be a really expensive, costly bill for for residents who live on the shoreline. Is that true of all residents who live in that along there? Or are there any exemptions or, because I know it's a, it's a, it's a big concern for a lot of the folks on the beaches, that's for sure.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. So any property that is essentially each property owner is responsible for maintaining or protecting their own property. So in our case, our road allowances in this area, particularly the ones that working on, you know, sixth and ninth. And we did twelfth street and tenth street earlier this year and eleventh street the year before. So we've been tackling erosion protection at the end of the road allowances through the last number of years. Private properties adjacent to to the road allowances, again, that they're responsible for protecting their own property. In this case, and this is the second time we've done it, we did it as part of the tenth and twelfth street as well. We actually reached out to the property owners probably a year in advance just to advise them that that we would be coming in and and doing the shoreline protection in these areas. And there may be an opportunity for them to jump on board in terms of tendering a larger contract for not only our works, but their private property works. And there's a mutual benefit to it in in the fact that, you know, the the more work that you're putting out there, the hopefully the cheaper price that you get. So that was the intent in that. In this case, the private property owners had to hire a design consultant to do, design their private works. And once that was done, it was put into the larger tender and it was, it was put out as a, as a large tender for for all the parties. So in terms of the payment, is the the property owners are required to provide the cost for the, their portion of the work upfront to the town, who, once it will complete, will be paying it to the contractor. So there's no real risk for the town in respect to that. In terms of determining the costs, when we put together the tender, we have a schedule of quantities and each item is broken out into to the various responsibilities. So in particular, a property has their line item with with respect to their quantities and ultimate costs that they will be having to pay for their portion of the works.
Thank you. More than answered my question. Thanks a lot. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Councillor Vardy.
Congratulations once again.
Thank you.
I only wanted to congratulate. So all the best to you and really, I'm really pleased that you got the job.
No, thank you. Appreciate it.
Councillor Sharp.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I have a couple of questions. First, I want to congratulate Brendan and I want to give a little history. Brendan has been our acting director of public works for the past year. And and just this week, he's been promoted to our full time director of public works. So Brendan's been with us for a while and and he has been in this role for a little while. And now he's just taken on the full time role of this. So congratulations, Brendan, and just a little history for those that are watching.
Thank you.
So the questions I have is why is there such a large variance between the low bid of about six hundred thousand and the high bid around one point five million? What is the difference in the type and quality of work that we're getting?
So for the first question is, so given it, sorry again, through you, Mr. Mayor. So the first question in terms of the the price range is it's really a competitive market, right? So sometimes what you can see is some contractors are busy and they they want to put a bid in. They overestimate their costs and if they end up getting the project because they're, you know, they're they're busy, but they end up having a huge profit margin in it. So if they do end up getting the project, then they, you know, they're they're willing to take on that work because it's, they're going to be making more of a profit. So so again, that's why you you'll see a wide range of 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 prices from the, from the low right to the bottom, from the top. And sorry, your second question was in terms of the quality. So we use a, the town uses a armor stone revetment structure. So it's it's similar to what you can see out at the Casablanca Beach Park and and some of the other road allowances that we've done. It's actually a large armor stone pieces which are kind of puzzled together for lack of a better term. And we've been using that that method for for as far as I've been, as long as I've been here anyways. And and it is a structure that is supposed to provide longevity. There are other methods that are used. It could be cheaper in terms of, you know, concrete blocks and stuff like that. But over the long haul, you know, you're you're the 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 cheaper the cost, you're going to paying for it in the long run in terms of having to rework that that erosion protection in the long run. So we think this, the material that we use and the method we use is 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 the best bang for our buck.
Okay, thank you. And so the other question I have, and this might just be clerical, this might just be a typo. But on the list of bids, note number two and note number three. So note two says the tender for Verdi Concrete of Toronto had an error in the total. It did not provide all the provisional items. But note number two is actually beside the Cambridge Landscaping and Construction bid. And then note number three talks about Cambridge Landscaping, but it's beside Verdi Concrete. So I just want to make sure that that those are just a typo on there?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. You're correct. That's a, that they should be reversed. I I caught that after the agenda went out, so good on you.
Thanks. I'm I'm just happy about that. And so I just wanted to make sure that we are getting the quality work that we're expecting. And it's great that we're going to get the same amount of work for for so much less money. And thank you. I'm glad that we're getting this important shoreline protection work done. Thanks.
Councillor Cadwell.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Jordan, through you to our new director of public works. Congratulations, Brendan. I've been working with you for a long, long time, been on public work since I got elected. And I think you've been there how many years now? I fourteen for me. Have you been there pretty much the same time? And I got, and I got a couple of questions too.
Twelve years, yeah. I think it was August of two thousand and eight.
Great, great. Just a couple of questions through the merits to Brendan. Councillor Frick brought up about grants and I did write that down in my notes because as as people are well aware, especially the people who live in the area of the Grimsey Beach on the dead end streets, we do have infrastructure, water and sewer that goes. You can help me out here, Brendan, goes right close to the shoreline, I believe. Because I think most of the time the fire hydrants are at the dead ends. So when we flush the main zone, you you want them at the furthest point of the of the watershed. So, yeah, I guess I'm thinking, what I meant, sorry, what I'm asking, Brendan, because of our infrastructure and you mentioned that we did get a grant under the OCIF. But can we, can we keep fighting for that? Because what we're doing is we're obviously protecting the shoreline, but we're also protecting our 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 infrastructure investment there. So, yeah, that's the first question, Brian. Thank you.
Sure, yes. And and thanks again. So in terms of the grants, we're always have our eyes open for what grant opportunities are available. I know that there's a new one coming out for the COVID. I don't know what the exact name of it is, but we are keeping an eye on to see where the scope of that lies. And if if we can apply that to 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 our projects. Again, as staff, we, at the end, at the, as part of the budget process, we we essentially have to look at what are our different funding opportunities? Where those opportunities fit within our, the rules of the grant, the different grants? And in in the case of the OCIF and the gas tax, they are annual grants that are our funds that are given to us. So, you know, there's a pre pre approved scope that you have to to work with. The one off grants is where, you know, we have to keep our eyes open for does the town qualify? And there's usually a lot of different rules in terms of, you know, what what type of works can can occur or what type of works fit within that scope. Sometimes it's it's, you know, based on population. Sometimes it's based on, you know, shovel ready projects and so on. So we're always kind of looking at, okay, here's a new grant and and what projects fit within that scope. So again, we would look at as those new grants come online, does the shoreline protection fit within it? And and is there an opportunity to move some of those projects around to to make it the the most beneficial to the town? In terms of, you know, again, with hot hot mixed asphalt, we we were previously using that for the gas tax. And we've now switched it to OCIF and and just to provide flexibility in in terms of the the different projects and making sure that they fell fell within the different scope. So hopefully that answers that question.
Great. Thank you for that response. So just a couple of other things. Does that pretty much complete the projects down at the Grimms Beach, sorry, Grimsey Beach Dead End Streets? Are they pretty much all shored up pretty well then, Brendan?
Sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just looking at our map here. So tenth and twelfth street were done last year. Ninth street, we did a ninth street, sixth street and the and the shoreline protection for the outlet structure are this year. We have a little bit of section at Victoria Terrace Park at the west end. And then some big ones in terms of the lakeside, sorry, the Whittaker Park and Elizabeth Elizabeth Street Pumps House and that that whole park area that we still need to complete. And there's a couple of other road allowances that we have on the future list. But overall, I think we're we're in really good position. We've done a lot of work over the last while to protect our shoreline protection, to protect our shores. And I I'd be happy to share with you that the, you know, kind of the overview map that shows kind of our our shoreline protection in terms of private and proposed and existing to give you a general sense of, you know, how, what we've accomplished over the last while.
Great. Thank you for that comprehensive response. And just two comments. I think our timing is perfect right now, Brendan, because the the Lake Ontario water levels are very low right now. I'm down at Morrison Crescent quite often with my my dog. And yeah, I just can't believe how much beach there actually is now. So I think that definitely works in our favor for the contractor too. And the other thing, just the last thing, while I was down there, I had had an opportunity to talk to one of the the shoreline protection contractors who was doing work for a couple of the residents that are just to the west of Nellis Beach Park. I'm not going to mention any names at all, but I had a good chat with the gentleman. He was saying that the average price that for residents that they're paying roughly is between twelve hundred and fifteen hundred dollars a square yard. So that was a very interesting statistic that in our conversation. But anyways, thank you very much, Brian, for all the, all the answers.
You're welcome. And just to add to that, Mr. Mayor, just in terms of the timing, what we've found too is we've we've started to tender this at late in the year for kind of the winter work. So there's a fish window in terms of when the agencies allow you to work and it runs from November fifteenth to March fifteenth. So we've actually found that by tendering it when we do and and constructing it early in the year, it's good for water level. Sometimes there's ice on the lake, so it's easier for them to work. The banks aren't as messy. And, you know, so it just, it goes to, and and contractors usually aren't busy in the winter. So it really has helped bring our prices down. So we're trying to be responsive and and again, getting as them as much work as we can in in the most cost effective manner, so.
Great. Thanks, Brendan. Councillor Bothwell.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. And again, congratulations to Brendan. It's exciting. Looking forward to working with you as we move move ahead because that's, you've been so responsive and professional and helpful with all the concerns that I've raised and I've really appreciated it for the for the area. So thanks again. Just a couple of quick questions of, if you could clarify for me, of the six hundred and two thousand, is it four hundred and fifty is the town's portion, the balances, the the residents who have chosen to participate in the tender? Is that correct? And how many residents chose to participate?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct. So the the balance for the private work is one hundred and fifty one thousand eight hundred and forty two dollars.
And how many residents per chose to participate?
Three.
Okay. I I appreciate and I know you guys are always looking out for for grants and opportunities there as well as our other councillors have have asked. And and I've seen some some offerings of climate resiliency funds and things like that. And our neighbours, Lincoln, have have been successful in getting some shoreline revetment grants and things. And they've partnered with Brock as well to do some, the Brock professors and and their students to do some some climate assessment. I just, you know, I I hope we keep those, that idea open as well to see if there's any partnership opportunities or looking at expanding on that MOU that they've got with Brock, because we're, we're going to be in the same boat. We've got, they did suffer more damage than us along the shoreline. But you're very proactive, but I think it's always good to take advantage if we can of those types of partnerships too. The map idea, I think that's great. It, I think, when we're looking for 2021, you mentioned that the difference, the balance here after our town portions expended is like eight hundred and sixty six thousand eight hundred and forty three. And you mentioned that that is for the forecasted 2021 budget. Are we positioning ourselves well? And it would be great to see a map as to what type of, how many more revetment works are in in the process and forecasted for 2021. I guess that will come out as we look at the budget process, which I'll be looking forward to. But are you thinking we're well positioned with the residual you've got as a result of this for this coming year?
Yeah, it's anytime that you can, sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor, anytime that you can come up with money. I think it's, you know, it's, it helps things be more flexible. And and we do, like, we do have a lot of projects coming, especially that, you know, again, the Whittaker Park, the 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 pier area at the pump house and some other projects that that we do need to tackle. So again, it's a matter of how how we rearrange those funds and make sure that we're we're getting the most benefit out of them from the from the various grants.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
You're welcome.
Thank you again, Brendan. And it's always nice when we can work with the neighbours, so we get more for less, so to speak. We just need a mover and seconder seeing no further questions. Councillor Cadwell mover and seconder, councillor Dunstall. Moved by councillor Cadwell, seconded by councillor Dunstall. Resolve that report DPW dash forty one dated November sixteenth, twenty twenty be received and that the director of public works be authorized to award the contract to Cambridge Landscaping and Construction Limited in the amount of six hundred and two thousand three hundred and nine dollars and fifty cents excluding HST, subject to permits and approvals being received from the appropriate agencies. And that the mayor and clerk are hereby authorized to sign any agreements and documents. And the clerk is hereby authorized to affix the corporate seal thereto and deliver to the same, deliver the same. On favor? That's carried. Up next, we have report DPW twenty dash forty two, the vehicle parking permit review for Grimsby Beach, the CIO. You're going to Up next, we have a report DPW 20 dash 42, the vehicle parking permit review for Grimsby Beach. CIO, you're going to comment on that?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This was a joint report done by the Director of Public Works and Director of Planning, just in response to the notice of motion at the last committee, the whole just for council's consideration on the vehicle parking permit review for Grimsby Beach. I did spend time with Counselor Frake and Counselor Ritchie on a on a complaint in Grimsby Beach. So I've got a good handle of the situation there. We're just recommending that we're doing the Grimsby Beach study. And that will include traffic patterns as well as parking options. And we were considering of council when making this decision would would allow the Grimsby Beach study to go forward. And then we can look at parking in a more holistic manner. One of the options that they would be looking at is a vehicle parking permit system, but there may be some other options to work with the parking issue in Grimsby Beach. And we're just asking for your consideration as you discuss the resolution to let us look at this holistically. Thank you.
Thank you, CIO. Counselor Frake.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, it isn't often we get a report before we pass a resolution. I guess this must be a first. So anyways, yeah, I I have no problem with that. I mean, I believe the intent was to have something back to council by May of next year, if I read the report correctly. I think that Grimsby Beach suffers more than any other part of town. That's my particular opinion anyways, in terms of parking. So hopefully, they will do a wholesome, fulsome and a very aggressive study of how we can accommodate people who own properties, own properties in our town and don't have access to one parking space. I think that's absolutely, you know, it's just not fair. I mean, it's just not fair all around. I mean, we need to accommodate because other people just come in and park from out of town, park in front of people's houses who own properties with no parking spaces, and they just don't get ticketed and they get away with it. So I think that every person who has who owns a property, a taxpayer, a constituent, a resident should have some type of dedicated parking. And I kind of that was the whole, it isn't just about the conversation that I myself and Counselor Ritchie had with with Harry there about a month or so ago. It goes beyond that. But I understand what what Harry said, and I have no problem incorporating this into the study. And I I look forward to a very wholesome study and analysis of how we can accommodate people who own property and don't have parking spaces down in the Vichy area. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Vardy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, not specific to to this motion. I think we need to look at parking writ large in many of our neighborhoods because I don't know about other counselors, but I'm getting quite a few complaints. And they stem from the same thing, which is people staying too long, you know, going beyond the, I guess, 18 hours that that people are given. And particularly when it comes time to snow removal. That what happens is that people are parked on on the street. So the snow removal trucks can't get up to the curb. And and basically, you know, it leaves those areas unclean. I've also received another complaint on Nellis Boulevard. And where there's only parking allowed on one side of the street. And I I went down and I drove and there was a truck parked on the side that allows parking. Like, I could barely squeeze through. And this is in nice weather. So when winter time comes, you know, basically, you know, one half of the street doesn't, one side of the street gets gets no service, a plow couldn't get through. So I I just want to put it out there. I suppose I'll bring a notice of motion to to look at this, but this isn't specific to necessarily one area in Grimsby. It's happening in in quite a few places. And I think we have to to address this because we're just getting too many complaints that are legitimate. So we've got to find a better way to perhaps handle this. Thank you.
Counselor Cadwell.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Jordan. And I was really happy to see this report. I thought it's a very well done report because it's just not that easy to come up with a parking plan or to get to make parking available, sorry, residents of Grimsby Beach. And I respect and understand the concerns. I lived not too far from Grimsby Beach for a few years. Anyways, because the issue there, there's a lot of one way streets. I was there. I was there on the weekend checking things out. And the roadway in most cases is just a single lane roadway. So there are a lot of challenges. And I think with this report coming from the Grimsby Beach study, with it being a fulsome report with as as it's written in about, they'll do an extensive parking study to it. I think that's great. And I look forward to the information coming forward. Thank you.
Counselor Bane.
Just to sort of piggyback on everybody else, Counselor Vardy started about, she made an excellent point. This has been a complaint we've had since before we got elected, that there's a huge concern about parking in this town. Partly because there's not enough of, partly because we have people buying homes or condos or whatever else. And they have one or two parking spaces and they have four cars. So I think the biggest issue I have is that we I previously brought a motion forward. Asked the town for a report on the possibility of hearing private security company to do just our parking so that our bylaw officers could do bylaw functions and not waste time on parking. And also parking security companies are available 24 hours, seven days a week. I did check into it a bit before I brought the motion forward. There is ways we revenue revenue neutral in that somebody's may consider taking a portion of the tickets. There's other options. We pay them. We get the money back. This would not be a cost a cost for the town because the money that we generate from the illegal parking, which is which is incredibly large in this town, all over the place. The other day I went by a school and there was a fire root and all these vehicles were there and people kept running in and out of the cars on both sides, just because they're picking up the kids from school. There's not enough parking. So this is definitely a big issue. I agree with Counselor Vardy. This is a much bigger issue. And I'd like to know what happened to that report that we as a council requested several months ago in regards to hiring a private parking company. Thank you. Parking control company, sorry. Thank you.
Counselor Rich.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad to see this coming through again with Counselor Frake dealing with the issue and representing the beaches area in the ward. You know, I do not hear of a lot of parking issues in that area. And maybe they just haven't expressed them to me. I do know of one issue in particular. But I think the most important thing is, is especially in the Grimsby Beach area, is that is a unique community. And this will allow us to have community feedback. I mean, when I look at something like this, you have, in in my opinion, the one the one complaint that's there. We might be going in and looking at imposing and doing something that could totally disrupt what's worked for there for many years. So the nice thing is, and maybe we go there and everything gets fixed. The nice thing is, is that this here allows the community input. And they will be heard and hopefully we move forward and something that works for everyone.
Counselor Sharp.
Thanks, Mayor Jordan. I just have a question about procedure. And this is kind of to the clerk. So on the next item on our agenda, we have a notice of motion for for this same topic. And so I just wonder if the clerk could clarify when notice of motion is required and why notice of motion is required? And how a notice of motion can incite or compel a report from staff before the council votes to to have a report from staff?
So well, the notice of motion, I believe, staff wanted to provide as much information as possible before this was passed. So that is why we had in our docket to bring this report as well. So that's why the report is coming in line with the notice of motion that was provided at the last council meeting. The next, so we are just receiving this report and the notice of motion, Counselor Frakes notice of motion is coming as a resolution in the next section.
Okay, so is is it possible to ask staff to bring a report before the notice of motion so that it's expedient? Or or does it have to be a vote of council that that would ask for a report from staff?
Sorry, can you repeat that question?
So is is it possible? And how, if I wanted to to have staff write a report, is there a method or or a procedure for for asking for that report from staff? Before we vote on it at council? And I'm not, there's nothing against your report. I'm just looking at procedure here. I I think it's great that you you guys have done this.
CIO, you wanted to comment?
Yeah, if I could comment, Mayor, thank you. In this case, we're not making a recommendation. We're just providing what's good about a notice of motion came a week ago. So the proper procedure. It gives us a chance to at least give you some more information as you're considering the resolution the following week. So in this case, we just felt it was important to give you more information. We respect if council still went ahead with the resolution that's coming up, still went forward with it. But at least now you have a bit more information to make that decision. It's not it's not an unusual thing, counselor. We'll provide a report to help you, inform you. We shouldn't be making a recommendation, but we give you a bit more information to inform you as you're considering that resolution.
My question to the clerk is that normally a notice of motion doesn't allow any discussion on the on the topic of the notice motion. And so I want to know when I make a notice of motion, how I can request that staff will bring a a report for information on the same meeting as that notice of motion so that I can discuss my issues at the meeting when the notice of motion comes up. Because you know, the things that I like are really important when and the procedure is, it's just a question in procedure. I I don't think there's any wrong being done here, but it's just I'd like to know how I can have this.
Counselor Sharp, just a clarification, the notice of motion was done at the November 9 meeting. So that was last meeting. So now now it's not a notice.
Not the resolution, right? Sorry, this is a this is my mistake. Sorry.
Counselor Frake.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's always good to be proactive. It's nice to get the report before the resolution. Appreciate that. Anyways, I just want to address a couple of comments that were made about parking in the beaches. I had been on a number of the beach tours, even though they're all the same. I thought I'd go down and I'd attend some of the tours. And one of the most common complaint in beaches area was parking. So in in various forms or other, I just I hear it when I when I talk to the folks on these tours. And I'm sure it'll come up in the as some of the items that were sort of the top of the items that were going to be listed by Bianca when she comes forward with the report. So anyways, I'm happy, Harry, to see this incorporated into the study. No point in doing it twice. So I look forward to some creative ideas around how we address the parking in the beach area. And thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Counselor Sharp.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I just wanted to clarify, I'm on the board of the Grimsby Museum and we do Grimsby Beach tours through the Grimsby Museum. The parking is all when it when it's a Grimsby Museum tour, they park at the Early Years Center and not on the roads in the Grimsby Beach. And we're very cognizant of of our impact on on the neighborhoods while we're doing the tour of the historic area. And so, well, I understand, and I have heard complaints about tourist parking. I hear about people parking tour buses down there and like that is a whole nother story, but I just wanted to be to clarify, the town of Grimsby does do some tours of our historic Grimsby Beach. And and we don't park on the roads.
I just just wanted to clarify, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, if I can, the these the tour I'm talking about, there is about six tours of Grimsby Beach by all by put together by the planning department by Antoneta and Bianca. And it's actually focused on the beach study itself. So it wasn't just a tour. It was it was actually a specific tour for the sake of the beach study.
So in that case, maybe this.
Sorry, Counselor Sharp.
No, but in that case, maybe we can just recommend to staff, we do own some municipal parking at the Grimsby Beach Community Center where the early years is by Grand Ave School. And so maybe if staff is down there, they can be cognizant of that as well. Thank you, Counselor Frake, for clarifying.
Thank you both counselors for all your clarification. I have Counselor Ritchie moved, seconded by Counselor Frake, resolved that report DPW 20 dash 42 dated November 16, 2020 be received for committee's consideration. All in favor? That's carried. Are we going to change this one? All right. Counselor Frake, before I read your report, I guess we're going to have a friendly amendment on this to incorporate it into the study. Do you just want to add that on to the end of it or?
Yeah, I just added on to the end, we incorporated it as a study because I think we're just overlapping our 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 two different projects here. So and of course, we don't want an extra cost attached to it either. So yeah, I'm fine with that. No problems, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I'll have you I have you as a mover on this and we need a seconder. Counselor Ritchie. Moved by Counselor Frake, seconded by Counselor Ritchie, whereas many residential homeowners in Grimsby Beach area don't have any dedicated driveways or parking spaces for their vehicles. And whereas anyone who doesn't reside in Grimsby Beach can currently occupy parking spaces anytime for unlimited time periods in these areas. And whereas our taxpaying homeowners and residents should be entitled to a minimum of one encumbered parking space where they reside, therefore be it resolved that staff incorporate all these recommendations or proposals into the Grimsby Beach study. And the clerk will work on the wording for that. But all in favor?
It sounds pretty good.
That's carried. All right, we're moving to number 12 correspondence. Need a mover and seconder on the correspondence for the from Mark Wood. Counselor Dunstall is a mover. Counselor Frake is a seconder.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
I had some discussion with the clerk about, I'd like to make a motion on this.
Yes, we have a motion here. Do you want me to read it to make sure that it's it's all right?
Sure. Yes.
Resolve that the written delegation in regards to Niagara Restaurants United, a call to action against new regional restrictions be received and endorsed by the town or the council of the town of Grimsby. And that the clerk be directed to forward this resolution to Niagara Regional Council Medical Officer of Health, Dr. Herji and MPP Sam Osterhoff for further endorsement.
If I could just clarify, I had asked for it to be copied to Chair Jim Bradley, all regional counselors, Dr. Herji and Sam Osterhoff.
Yeah, it has Niagara Regional Council and the Medical Officer of Health.
Okay, no, great.
And yeah, just if I could have a quick comment on this. It was a recommendation by the Medical Officer of Health. And in in my opinion, the Medical Officer of Health broke with protocol from the start of the pandemic in March. Everything was a recommendation by the Medical Officer of Health. And it was always discussed at the region and it was a region Regional Council made the actual final call. And this And it was always discussed at the region and it was a region, regional council made the actual final call and this Dr. Hergi. Told us essentially one thing at our public health meeting on Tuesday. And so Regional Council didn't have anything to do or even debate on on the decision that was. Put down by the Medical Officer of Health. So at our meeting on November nineteenth. This Thursday, we will be, there will be. Quite a debate, I'm sure regarding this. These restrictions that have been put down and and how they've been done and and where they've gone and quite honestly, in Grimsby. Because I can speak for Grimsby because that's where we are, our restaurants have done a great job stepping up. And and working with all the ever-changing regulations. And as far as I know, we don't know of any. Covid nineteen case that has originated in one of our restaurants in in town. So it is really unfortunate that. Our restaurants have done such a good job, yet they're being penalized. By rules that don't even completely conform with with the province. So we'll hear more about that on Thursday, but I will let council discuss it now. Councillor Dunstall.
Mayor Jordan, could I just take first kick at the can since I brought this resolution?
I think I had my hand up first.
I think it's fair for the diopaths as a resolution to have first choice.
Sorry, sorry, I was muted for that, so I. Councillor Dunstall, if you're okay with that. All right, councillor Sharp, and then councillor Dunstall.
So the written delegation. Here was headed by Mark Wood of Grimsby's Forty Public House, and if you haven't had a chance to read it. He is commenting on the new restrictions put in place just this weekend, requiring restaurants to collect. Contact info from every person at at the table and not just one person at the table. And to ask patrons to attest that they are from the same household or maximum two people from another household, essential to physical and mental health. And the restaurants are required to keep this data private from other patrons and not just left out on a countertop. And they are required to store this data for a month and provide it to public health upon request. The author talks about the government posturing every time covid cases surge and politicians. Believe that they must immediately make public statements to appear in control. And these statements always imply new restrictions for restaurants. Or the threat of more restrictions and even those threats are just as as damning for the restaurants. As the restrictions are because they're just losing business and. The author claims that there is a lack of substantiated evidence to indicate that the restaurants are making the situation worse. And he also cites other problems that the restaurant closures are creating, such as unemployment, which leads to poverty, debt, food insecurity, bankruptcy. Mental health issues, just to name a few. I tend to agree with Mark that there is no real evidence that it is restaurants that are making covid worse. And I support his request to endorse this letter and send it to the region of Niagara. Just thank you for hearing me out. Thanks again, councillor Dunstall.
Can I second that?
Yeah, we have, well, we have councillor Dunstall moving it and councillor Frick seconding it.
Okay.
Councillor Dunstall.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, if you don't mind if I have a little bit of discussion about this one, it's close to my heart. I've had to deal with it ever since covid nineteen took hold and back in. The early days when we first declared a state of emergency in Ontario, we were all shuttered and only could provide takeout. In June, we were allowed to open up our patios and then in July, we were allowed to start with dine-in again. And and since the second wave has hit in early October. There have been restrictions applied to certain regions and certain restaurants, which is. Brought a lot of hardship to to restaurants that. Probably won't make it through this this second wave because they maybe had the resources to get through the first wave. But have depleted everything and this is just going to put them out of business completely. What happened on Saturday morning at twelve oh one on November fourteenth. Our interim Medical Officer of Health brought in extra restrictions. On top of what the province had declared for Monday, which was code orange for the Niagara region. And those restrictions included not only contact information, which we had already been doing, we've been doing contact information. In code yellow, it required that we kept contact information on every member of. Every person in the party at the table where before we just needed to keep one person's name. And contact information per table. So we had already started that, but now our medical officer of health has told us that we now have to. Indicate, we have to ask if they have any symptoms of covid nineteen. We have to also indicate when they left, which I was somewhat confused about because. Our POS systems all say when people pay, so I'm sure when you've finished paying your bill, you probably leave within five or 10 minutes, but this is. More work. Each table has to have sanitizer sanitizer at it at all times. And only family members can sit at the table and now that we've gone today into code orange. Only four people can sit at a table, so if you're a family of more than four, you won't be able to sit together because. You're only allowed to have four people at the table in code orange. Also, this applied to patios. I really felt bad. I haven't done anything myself for the patio because I wanted to use a wait-and-see method. But anybody that's gone to the expense of buying the heaters and trying to semi-enclose their patio in the Niagara region. Now can only allow people of the same family to sit on the patio, which I really thought was taken it. Just a little too far, where we're trying to accommodate people outside. It's it's an open air. It's safer and yet we're not allowed to have people sit there unless they're of the same household, not the same family, the same household. Unless, as as councillor Sharp indicated, unless it's a. A person who's living by themselves and it's their caregiver or their support worker and they can have up to two people. But that person has to be living on their own, so. There's some huge challenges here that my staff faced on Saturday. Took quite a bit of abuse from people who just had no idea what hit them. And it it just, it caused a lot of disruption, a lot of anxiety. And it brought, was brought in very suddenly. It wasn't something we had a few days to to. Work on. It was Friday when I found out and we had to be ready for Saturday morning. And with the threat of a five thousand dollar a day fine, so that's pretty. Pretty tough for any restaurateur out there in the Niagara region to have to to do that and and now we're looking at code orange. I'm hearing there's going to be more restrictions in Toronto, which is going to eventually move into the Niagara region, so. It's just going to get tougher. My question about the letter is some of it's been blacked out. Is that how we're sending the letters? It's a question I had, because obviously we had good reason to black it out. Maybe it was a tone of the sentences that were blacked out that we didn't want to use, but. It's pretty tough. I can see Mark being pretty upset about it. We all are. I've talked to some other operators and we're all upset about it. Sorry. Go ahead. Is there, why we blacked out some of the?
Clerk, about the letter being blacked out? Okay, so so I think the redactions were based on the tone and and.
We're going to leave that that way when we, we are endorsing it without that in there, of course.
Right.
Yeah.
I I think that's that's the gist and and. Thank you, councillor Dunstall, for all the information you provided, so.
You can read the letter on Facebook without the redactions if you want.
No, I don't need to. Thank you.
Councillor Vane.
Did you say councillor Vane? I'm sorry, you cut out.
Yes, councillor Vane, sorry about that.
Thank you. Sorry, my computer's cutting in and out tonight sometimes. First of all, first and foremost, to, I have spoken to councillor Dunstall at length about this, he's. And I understand where he's coming from. It's it's just, it's causing so much havoc. It's costing jobs, it's costing money, it's costing businesses to close down. I I've heard numbers in Toronto that sixty percent of the businesses in Toronto may not survive. That's a lot of businesses closed and in Niagara region, there's a lot that are on the edge too. But having said that, I my concern has nothing to do with. With what we're sort of discussing here. My concern is the fact that politicians at the region are trying to decide whether to override the. Medical Officer of Health. Well, I think we definitely need to support our businesses and I think they've done a fantastic job. I've seen. Councillor Dunstall, I've seen the forty, I've seen other restaurants in the Grimsby doing wonderful jobs and I think. If you look and I I'm sorry, I'm not trying to promote one restaurant over another here, but I'm going to use one councillor Dunstall's restaurant. He put plexiglass between each booth. Other places have done the same thing. On the forty, they they made the social distancing when they had the patio and stuff. So I think there's a lot of efforts that can be made. My only concern, as I say, is us as politicians. Trying to tell the Medical Officer of Health what we think is best. I think to a certain degree, we may want to ask him to reconsider, but I don't think we should be telling him what to do. I think Doug Ford said it the best. The other day, he said, we're looking down the barrel of another shutdown. We've got to do everything in our power to make sure we don't get that shut down because it will kill a lot of businesses. Having said that, we got an email tonight, all members of council, saying that a number of people are coming from Hamilton and using the Good Life Fitness at the super centre. That was given, sent to us all from a resident. And so these are things that I I believe we have to find a way. To make sure that we're safe. If you look at the United States, there's a million cases a day that are being diagnosed down there. And you've seen some of the crazy stuff they do down there. I do believe we have to have a certain amount of controls, but I do believe we got to find a way to protect our businesses. That's all. Thank you.
Councillor Bothwell.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I can, I I certainly sympathize with where our our local businesses and restaurants are coming from. I totally support. The concerns that they've raised. I just have a little bit of an issue again with the tone of the letter and I know some of it's been blanked out, but the stuff that's remaining. They talk about. He speaks that he's asking immediately for Dr. Hergi's resignation. And he also states that they're seeking legal counsel to file an injunction and possibly a class action suit against the doctor and the region. I just want to be, I'm just want to clarify the motion that councillor Sharp is bringing is asking us to endorse this letter. I'm fine with endorsing that the region rescind or review these decisions and seriously look at. Making it more effective for residents to operate without those restrictions, but I'm a little concerned that what we're endorsing here is. The resignation of Dr. Hergi and and supporting legal injunction against our own region. And I'm just concerned that that might put us in a, in a bad position that way, just by supporting this letter. I support everything else in it. I just am concerned about. That that language. Thank you.
Maybe we do need further redaction in the letter because. I think they think there's a couple of comments in there that that may be problematic for us as a council to endorse, so. Councillor Frick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with that, but I think that you have to understand. The, you know, the the, why the letter was written and how much it meant to the people who wrote it, especially Mr. Wood and a lot of his. The folks that own restaurants in the region, they're being very emotional and they're trying to protect their livelihood. So you you can't really fault them for being overly emotional in this case and and throwing everything at it. I I think it is appalling that that Dr. Hergi has decided to take it on by himself. To publish this type of this type of recommendation without having it go to regional council first for for discussion, debate and approval. Having said that, when I look at the statistics around Ontario, I think Niagara region is one of the better. Regions in terms of keeping this particular covid under check. And I must admit of all, I mean, I I dine out all the time. During the day, I mean, I go to a lot of restaurants right across the region quite frequently. And I must admit, they all follow the rules very closely. They take the people's names when they come through the door, they ensure you have a mask on, the tables and chairs are distanced. I I must admit that we, the the region, from what I've seen, have done a great job and I don't know why we're even in the orange sector at this point in time. But anyway, so because I think we've been doing a great job in the region and I'm sure we will continue to do so, but to have this sprung on us now. I mean, knowing that what what we've gone through in the past few months, we're nearly, we have lost, already lost a number of restaurants, small businesses and hospitality businesses and. We cannot afford to lose our small businesses and especially our restaurant owners. They have put so much of their life into these businesses. And we need to do everything possible to make sure they stay open and become and stay profitable so they can be there in a year from now. Otherwise, we just destroy a huge part of the economy as a process, as part of the process, so. Anyways, I I'm sure, I think this is going to the region, if you, if I heard you correctly, on Thursday for debate and some some more. Some more investigation, is that correct, Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, that it's on the agenda on Thursday.
That message will be loud and clear. Anyways, that's my two cents worth and thank you.
Councillor Vane.
I am just curious, again, it's just something the councillor Frick just said that kind of threw me there. Again, as I stated before, I have a real problem with councillors telling a medical doctor what's best for our medical health. Is there any medical doctors actually on regional council? Or is it just politicians who got elected by people with no medical experience? Can anybody answer that question? I'm not familiar with any, so I I'm just, not that I, like I say, I'm supporting the business here, I'm on the business side. But I do have real concerns with us as politicians, because we got good enough to get elected, that we're going to tell a medical person. That, hey, we know there's millions of deaths around the world, but we want to keep our businesses open at any cost. And then what happens when somebody does die? What happens when we get a mass outbreak like we had in Niagara Falls a little while back? We had a super spreader that went to a party or something recently and seventy-five people were infected. I I'm just, I just want to err on the side of caution here, like speak to the director, I have no problem with that. Give him direction as a politician, I have a big problem with that. That's all. Thank you.
Councillor Sharp.
I withdraw.
Councillor Frick.
I just want to clarify that, you know, we as elected officials for our particular municipalities and for the region. We we're not experts on anything specifically or we're not experts on everything, put it that way. So we listen to doctors, we listen to lawyers, we listen to all types of professionals, but it's us at the end of the day that represent the people and make the decision. We may not know everything about what but what they, what Dr. Hergi knows, but it's up to him to come to council and explain to them. What he thinks they should do and the recommendations and the reasons why, and then council can take it from there and make the right decision. That's what we do. That's what we're supposed to do. That's what we're elected for. So so let 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 him come to council, the regional council, and put his case forward and let the region, regional municipality. Make their decisions as to what we should do to go forward to protect our people and our businesses. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Councillor Dunstall.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. I just wanted to add that I think as a restaurant operator, as restaurant operators out there, we. Feeling somewhat targeted because of what's happening and when we've gone to, as councillor Frick has said, to all the. Extra measures that other businesses might not be required to do, we've gone above and beyond to do what we've done. And we don't see ourselves as a source of the problem. We're not, we're not spreading covid nineteen. That's not to say that somebody doesn't come into our establishment that is a. that is systematic or has had it. But we're not the source of the problem, so we feel somewhat targeted by this whole experience. And it's, and it is decimating our business, it really is. And in the background, you've got all your grocery suppliers that supply restaurants that are really feeling hit too. It's, it's really, it, it snowballs. It's not just frontline restaurant operators that are feeling it, it's behind the scenes too. So it's, it's a tough go. So it's, I mean, we have to do what we have to do and I'll, I'll follow the rules, but it's been pretty hard on restaurant operators, they've really felt it. Thank you for, for the time.
Councillor Vardy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I, I'm really sensitive to this whole argument that, or this whole discussion that, that we've been having, having worked in, in public health in most of my career. And in looking at population health, health is about more than just doctors and medicine. You know, sometimes you have to take a much broader perspective on what is, what is going to make people healthy. There are many determinants of health. And, and I, I think that's where we're kind of getting into a little bit of trouble here. And I think it's about finding the balance and also making very clear evidence-based decisions. So that said, I support Dr. Hergy coming forward and I hope that he considers a population health approach to this issue because it is, it, it's more than what it seems because there are many collateral damages that are affecting people. We, you know, we know that by restricting people going to hospitals and restricting people who've had, who have cancer and getting treatment. I mean, these are the kinds of issues you look at in, in a population health perspective. It's not just the disease, it's also, it's also poverty. It's, you know, there are many, many factors to look at. So I, I guess what I would like or what I would request our regional councillor and our mayor to do is ask Dr. Hergy to speak to some of the determinants of health and a population health approach to this and to ensure that the decisions coming forward are balanced and, and evidence-based. And I know that's not probably helping anyone say you should do A or B. But it's, it's really what I'm asking for is a way to look at the problem in a much more holistic way. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Vardy. We'll certainly, Councillor Firdish and myself will certainly ask those questions. Councillor Sharp.
Yeah, I, I would just request, we discussed this a little bit, just for a friendly amendment. If we could also redact the, it's in paragraph seven, sentence three, the portion about the resignation of Dr. Hergy. If you, if you redact that whole sentence and we approve it, I think that that would be more agreeable to some of my colleagues and myself too. It's paragraph seven, sentence three. It's, it's a bit of a run-on sentence, but it's, it's all contained in there. And if, if the mover and seconder, I thought I was moving this, but if, but if whoever is moving it is okay with that, I think it's appropriate.
The clerk's just working on that right now. Moved by Councillor Dunstall, seconded by Councillor Frick, resolved that the written delegation in regards to Niagara Restaurants Unlimited, a call to action against new regional restrictions be received and endorsed by the town or by council of the town of Grimsby. And that the section regarding the resignation of Dr. Hergy be further redacted and that the clerk be directed to forward this resolution to the Niagara Regional Council Medical Officer of Health, Dr. Hergy and MPP Sam Oosterhoff for further endorsement. Is that good for the mover and seconder? All right, all in favor? That's carried. All right. All right. All right, we have the rest of the correspondence, we need a mover and seconder for it. Councillor Sharp.
I just have a question, I just want to make one comment on one of the correspondence.
Yeah, well, we'll get a mover and seconder on the table and then you can put your hand up for a call. So, so we have Councillor Sharp, mover. Councillor Vane, second. Councillor Sharp, you wanted to discuss?
Yeah, on the item B, if I could just comment on the correspondence from Niagara region regarding the request for the federal government to decriminalize the possession of all illicit drugs. I do not support the decriminalization of all illicit drugs, so I won't be supporting this motion. I wonder if we can vote on it separately? Thank you.
All right. Okay, yes, so, yeah, so there's two of them, so we'll just, we'll just vote on them separately then. Councillor Dunstall.
Yeah, thank you, just a point of clarification. When we receive any correspondence and we vote to receive it, that doesn't mean we endorse it or do anything else.
That's correct.
So it, it doesn't mean we support it either, correct?
That's, that's right, it's just saying, we're just receiving it.
That's, that's all we're doing. I mean, if we want to take it a step further, then that's a separate consideration, correct?
That, that's right. Yeah, we're, we're just receiving, receiving both these items, so.
Are there other options, like than receiving?
Well, you can endorse it if you want.
Can you send it back?
No, I'm just, I, I'm prepared to receive it. If, if you're not, you can vote against it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I'll, I'll read them separately for Councillor Sharp. Oh, sorry, Councillor Vane.
I'm in tendency to agree with Councillor Sharp. Having been in the law enforcement for 31 years and seeing what drugs could do to people and how something as simple as using certain drugs one time can make you an addict for life, I agree with Councillor Sharp. I think we have to send a very strong message back that we do not support this. The, we cannot deal with the amount of addicts we have now. If you have any doubt of the impact of addiction, just take a walk downtown Hamilton any day, during the day. And it's, no, I think, I agree with Councillor Sharp. We've got to send this message that we oppose this. So I think something needs to be done. Like, I have no problem receiving it, we receive it, not a big deal. But I would like to see maybe a motion put forward that we go back and say, well, we believe that we do not support it.
Yeah, because it came from regional council and there were a lot of reports at regional council about it. The, the, just of, of the reason why, why they were supporting the decriminalization or the potential decriminalization is exactly for those reasons to, to, rather than getting people into long-term criminal, criminal time and actually institutional time, it's more of an area where they, they can work on rehabilitation and decriminalization. They're still going to be fined and there's still going to be processes that they have to, to do when, when charged with these offenses. It just, it's, it's a more of a, from reading the reports and there was a lot of material on this resolution and letter. Just, it was more, much more of a holistic approach and realizing that, that some of these, while these people that were being charged with a criminal charge, it got them into the system and, and once they were into the system, serving penitentiary type time, they never made it out. And rehabilitation has been proven and with all this material that was, was written there, rehabilitation was proven that was easier to start if it wasn't, if they didn't have the criminal record to start and did community time and got into the proper program. So that, that was a little background, whether we want to oppose it, that's up to council, so. Councillor Sharp.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. I just wanted to mention, so like, well, I do understand the treatment perspective and like getting people, preventing people from getting into the system, there's efficacy in that. But some of these illicit drugs, and I'm talking specifically about fentanyl, they're, they're deadly. And like, so you get some people who are in possession of them for personal use and, and you have to be a pretty hardcore drug user to use fentanyl because you need a real tolerance for it. But some of these guys, or girls or people, they end up in like a public washroom, say Tim Hortons or something, and using these drugs. And, and these drugs are so strong that like, even just touching them, you, you have residue left on the back of a toilet or on a counter of a, of a toilet paper dispenser or something. And so someone like myself or yourself, or my kids come in there and they're touching everything, right? And you might be touching something, literally just a single small amount of fentanyl on this, on your skin can cause an overdose. Like people from just one granule of it. And then they, people can die. So like, so where, where, where there is a point to, to not putting people in criminal system when it's a medical addiction, there's also a criminal factor, you, you can seriously hurt people. And some of these recreational users who hang with more hardcore users might not be aware of what's in the drugs that their friends are using. And, and so they have them for personal use, they're not drug dealers, but, but they have drugs and then a person, a 16-year-old, a 14-year-old who's hanging out with a 19-year-old who's a little bit more into it than they are, these guys die. We've had, Councillor Vane keeps better track, but there's been multiple overdoses in our downtown area that like, you have people that are, they're accidentally overdosing and on, on these illicit drugs that are, that are very dangerous to, to not just to the users and like to, to people around them. So, so I don't support this, there, there are, there is some value to, 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 like, I understand the point of, of this, but I don't think it's achieved through, through decriminalization of all drugs. And so I don't support it.
Councillor Cadwell.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. Just a comment, just reading through the report, the Canadian Associations of Chiefs of Police are mentioned, they addressed this three, three different paragraphs where it's references whereas. They're also, therefore be resolved, the federal government be urged to convene the task force. So they, I guess, they, they deal with this on a lot, on a very, very strong basis. So I'm, I'm going to support the resolution based on the information in the, in the document here.
Councillor Vardy.
Thank you. Once again, I guess I want to take a public health approach to this and throwing people in prison because they're addicted to drugs isn't going to help them at all. And I, I think the best means is that there's various kinds of harm reduction that, that can be instituted, various programs that, that, that basically, instead of channeling people into prison, you find a ways to start channeling them into, into programs that help them deal with their drug abuse. And it's a complex problem, you know, it's, it's, you know, as, as it says in the report, it's mental, mental health issues, it's poverty, it's homelessness. These, these are complex problems. And the police who see it day to day, as you can see, have, have determined that, you know, the prison route is, is not an effective way in getting the results that, that we want. And I think a public consultation on what we can do. You know, just because it's, as Mayor Jordan has said, just because it's decriminalized doesn't mean that, that there isn't a charge. And, you know, and which is great because that, that's an intervention point as well. So I'm, I'm going to support this. I know how, how interventions can work. Many of you know, I, I worked in Hep C for some time and set up the federal government's hepatitis C program. And, you know, pretty much once you picked up the needle, you, you were infected. So, you know, the, there's, there's a lot more that, that we can be doing. And, you know, shifting the resources from, from sort of penalizing to, to promoting people's health, I, I think is a, is a wise move. So I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Councillor Bothwell.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. And I think as, as Councillor Vardy said it very eloquently, it is a much larger picture and a lot of families are impacted by drug addiction and abuse. And it's a very, very sensitive and, and hurt-wrenching topic. But this is calling for the federal government to do something to, to put together a task force to look at it as a public health issue with a wider lens and to engage the people who are most affected and the experts who are most affected to find ways to look at solutions. So this resolution to me is a positive move. It's saying to the federal government, you've got to put your money at, at the level where we can make the most good out of it and, and get people at the beginning of, of this journey so we can help them, their families and put the supports in place. So I think the decriminalization and that too, there's still impacts, there's still, there's still concern there, I understand that. But this is saying, let's get that task force to look at it and see where it might be effective, where it might not be effective. So I'm going to support it because I think it's, it's asking the federal government to put the money at that, at the grassroots level where, where the people need it at the beginning of this, of this painful journey. Thank you.
Councillor Vane.
Sorry, I don't mean to beat a dead horse. I do want to commend, commend Councillor Vardy, I agree with her and, and I support what she said. My whole idea is, I, I'm not against rehabilitation, that to me is always the best step. But as we know, oftentimes when governments decriminalize or stop enforcing something, the money doesn't get rejected, it goes into general revenue. If the government comes forth and says, yeah, we're going to do it, I'm just kind of curious what the government did as far as the people dealing with issues with marijuana. I don't remember hearing any extra money going to our healthcare system yet improving. And I've seen actual examples of this. Young people who need marijuana on a regular basis have become schizophrenic. It's a proven scientific, medical fact, I've got people that deal with it. We've also had two deaths in Grimsby since I was, we've been elected in, from overdoses in Grimsby. We had a third case where a gentleman asked to use a bathroom in a particular business and went in there, started shooting up and made such a mess of the bathroom, it took the cleaners two hours to clean all the blood and stuff off the walls and the gentleman had to be removed by the police. So if we're going to just close our eyes, say, yeah, we're just going to... So if we're going to just close our eyes, say, yeah, we're just going to, you know, we're going to vote this away. And then people are going to come in and we're going to have more money. I, I think we're being a little naive here. I would like to believe that I, I hope and pray that like Counselor Vardy said, the government will redirect money away from enforcement to this. But I don't see it happening. I, I really don't. But that's just my opinion. And as I say, I've seen the effects of what drugs can do. And, and I think Counselor Sharp's right on the money. I have told my officers from day one, when you touch a package of drugs, and we seize a lot of drugs at customs, when you touch that package or you touch the container, it's in, you make damn sure you're wearing a pair of gloves, a minimum, a pair of gloves. Because you, as Counselor Sharp said, if a child were to touch a piece of fentanyl that somebody's left on a counter or on top of a toilet or whatever else, the child will die. My father was given fentanyl as part of a procedure at the hospital. He's a very strong man. He's very big and he went loopy. So it's not a joke. And I'm just saying, I would like to see something saying, we received this, but we would like to see money towards the healthcare system to accommodate issues because of it. That's all. Thank you.
All right, everyone's had enough on this, so I'm just going to read the resolution. And if it passes, that we receive it, we'll receive it. Moved by Counselor Sharp, second by Counselor Vane. Resolve that the correspondence under administration and finance with reference to decriminalization of personal possession of illicit drugs be received. Better do a recorded vote. Counselor Bothwell?
Yes.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yes.
Counselor Frake?
Yes.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yes.
Counselor Ritchie?
No.
Counselor Sharp?
No.
Counselor Vane?
No.
Counselor Vardy?
Yes.
And myself, I'm a yes, so that is carried. And moved by Counselor Sharp, second by Counselor Vane. Resolve that the correspondence under planning and development with reference to a petition against Grimsby Airport, 262 Mud Street, be received. All in favor? That's carried. Our next meeting of the committee of the whole is scheduled for December 7th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. Now we're moving into closed session. I need a mover and seconder to move into closed. Moved by Counselor Vane, second by Counselor Dunstall. Moved by Counselor Vane, second by Counselor Dunstall. Resolve that committee of the whole meet in closed session regarding the following. Under section 2392C, a proposed pending or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality requested by Counselor Vane. Closed session discussion, acquisition of new parkland requested by Counselor Vane. And closed reports, disposition of asset and land under section 2392D, labor relations or employee negotiations, fire services review. All in favor to go into closed? All right, we're moving to close. We'll be back later with the regular committee meeting. Welcome back to the public. Grimsby Committee of the Holes back in open session. Need a seconder for Counselor Vane's motion. Seconder? Counselor Dunstall? Moved by Counselor Vane, second by Counselor Dunstall. Resolve that closed session discussion regarding acquisition of new parkland be received. All in favor? That's carried. Okay. I can't remember how it was. All right. All right. Who's the mover and seconder in there? It should be the same. All right. Moved by Counselor Vane, second by Counselor Sharp. Resolve that staff be directed to bring a closed session report in regards to the disposition of asset and land and its financial implications. And that's a recorded vote.
Counselor Bothwell?
No.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yes.
Counselor Frake?
No.
Counselor Cadwell?
Nope.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yes.
Counselor Sharp?
Yes.
Counselor Vane?
Yes.
Counselor Vardy?
No.
Mayor Jordan?
No.
I was defeated.
And we just need a mover and seconder for the next resolution. Fire services. Moved by Counselor Frake, second by Counselor Bothwell. Moved by Counselor Frake, second by Counselor Bothwell. Resolve that the preliminary findings of the fire service review be received and the committee directs staff to continue to move forward with a more detailed report in quarter one. All in favor? That's carried. That brings our committee of the whole to adjournment. Our regular council meeting will start at 10:30. Thank you. Welcome back everyone to Monday, November 16th, 2020 council meeting. Up, we have a call to order. And first we start with playing of the National Anthem. So all rise. All right, we move to number three. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? Seeing none. Number four, approval of the agenda. Need a mover and seconder? Counselor Cadwell, Counselor Dunstall? Moved by Counselor Cadwell, second by Counselor Dunstall. Resolve that the agenda for the council meeting of November 16th, 2020 be approved. All in favor? That's carried. Just need a mover and seconder for the committee of the whole minutes and council minutes of November 9th. Counselor Frake, Counselor Bothwell? Moved by Counselor Frake, second by Counselor Bothwell. Resolve that the committee of the whole minutes of November 9th, 2020 and the council minutes of November 9th, 2020 be approved. All in favor? That's carried. Up next, we have number seven, the consent agenda. I need a mover and seconder to approve, report DRS 2010. Mover and seconder? Counselor Frake, Counselor Vane? Moved by Counselor Frake, second by Counselor Vane. Resolve that the council hereby approves the following items, that the various consent items be approved on the recommendation as contained therein, DRS 20-10. All in favor? That's carried. And now we've moved to number 14, announcements. And I just have one to start off, just that the mayors and council, regional councils of West Niagara look forward to the regional council meeting on the 19th. We are moving a resolution forward to get the West Lincoln Memorial Hospital asked from the region on the, it's going to be on the agenda and we hope to get it approved and move forward to the budget for the 2021 budget. So we're looking very forward, are forward to that. And, and I'm quite excited that, that we see the hospitals moving forward. After our tour last week, we can really see that, that things are starting to take shape and that we just have to keep pushing to make it a reality and a reality very soon. Counselor Sharp?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I have two announcements. One, I went out this weekend to clean up the Forty Mile Creek behind Food Basics with a group of residents led by Duncan Story and his wife, Ayumi. You can read the full story about this at benchnews.ca, which is a great online newspaper writing local stories about our community. I wanted to mention this because I've been out several times this summer with the same group cleaning up the trail behind Remax and beside Forty Mile Creek where some teenagers tend to mess up the area with litter and beer cans, et cetera. We even pulled a lawnmower out of the creek this summer, which can leak hazardous chemicals into the waterway, which is home to many fish and wildlife. And I want to use this time to remind residents that dumping or littering is prohibited and especially in the Forty Mile Creek. Also, the firearms discharge bylaw, we're having a public consultation that is tomorrow night, November 17th. I just wonder if staff can please clarify now where a resident can go to view that. I think the participation closed on the 13th, but if you want to watch it, how can you watch it?
Sarah?
So the registration closed on Friday, that was the registration to also view. So all the Zoom link has been sent out this afternoon.
So can anyone view it or only people who registered?
Only people who have registered.
Will we be posting this? Like in our, you know, we, we put our council meetings, you can view them or committee meetings. So what about for residents who didn't register that want to at least see the public consultation?
So we haven't made a statement that this public meeting is to be recorded. So we are not recording it. We will be taking all the feedback and incorporating it into a report that will be brought forward to council in December.
Okay. So there's no way, if you missed that deadline, you're, you're out. That's a, I'm sorry, I was trying to, to get information for the public how they can participate. But I think we found our answer. Thanks very much.
Counselor Bothwell?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I'm just excited about the new DIA event coming up on November 26th. Lady shopping night, it's a tradition. I guess they've carried on for a number of years now. And they've, it sounds like it's going to be very, very well positioned. I think there's 12 businesses so far that are participating. It's from 6 to 10 PM, 6 to 9 PM is the ladies' night portion, but they're going to be having NRT door-to-door service too. So the DIA is offering a, our Niagara Regional Transit On Demand free for people who want to go from Thursday, November 26th to December 2nd, from 9 to 6 PM daily. And for ladies' night till 10. There's more in the DIAs, who are Friendly By Nature's website on that. But I just want to encourage everyone to shop downtown, keep going, keep spending. And especially the ladies, go out and have a great time in a COVID-safe environment on the 26th in the evening and frequent the restaurants while you're there. And take advantage of all the DIA has to offer. So just, just a friendly reminder about that coming up. Thanks.
Counselor Vane?
First of all, I want to, I want to do a really big shout out to Gamru. They, they did a record-breaking year this year. They did 40 rescues on the water. And they're currently having a fundraiser and which they know they won't raise anywhere near the amount of money they normally do. But their, their quick response boat was damaged in the, the last rescue of the season. And, you know, I really encourage people to go on and support Gamru as much as you possibly can. And we can't thank them enough. They save lives. They, unfortunately, in some situations, they actually recover bodies when they have to, which fortunately is not that often, but they do that. And they are a key component to people who are in distress out in the water. Gamru goes down. I also want to say, I got some information from the town of Lincoln. And I want to do a special shout out to our own, very own town manager, Harry Schlang. Apparently, I'm hearing that Harry was very involved in the, the setting up the, the, what do you call it? The contribution schedule or I'm not sure the quiet thing with the region. So I want to thank Harry publicly for all of his excellent work that he did on this. And I, I look forward to the end result of this. And this, it'll benefit our hospital. And thank you very much, Harry. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Counselor Vardy?
Thank you, three, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to mention that the, the virtual Waze Goose book has been printed. I see Counselor Bothwell, I got you this time, and is, is available. I haven't seen it up close, only on Zoom, but apparently it's quite stunning and available for purchase. So for those of you that have been collecting the, the annual Waze So for those of you that have been collecting the, the annual Waze Goose books, I, I invite you to call the art gallery and reserve yours because they're, they're going fast. All right, thank you.
Counselor Frake?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Bothwell, for stealing my, my lines. But I'm glad you did announce what's happening at the DIA. It's, it's a, it's a great service. And the ladies' night and Black Friday and, and the NRT being able to participate in free rides for people who want to shop downtown is a fantastic, absolutely fantastic move by the DIA. Anyways, I just wanted to say something, I want to say thank you actually to Sarah Sweeney and her team for listening to the concerns of the residents in North Court. There was a lot of issues over there dealing with youth who were there late at night, making noise, setting off firecrackers and all types of things which Counselor Cadwell can relate to and Counselor Vardy as well. So thank you very much for taking care of that. I mean, I know it's been a few months of trying to get it all sorted out. But a nice email came through today saying that one of the things you were supposed to do was cut down the, some of the tree limbs or branches, which you did. And interesting enough, the, the residents in the area are using the pine boughs and limbs to make Christmas decorations. So, so we're recycling the limbs and branches that you cut down. Thank you for that, Sarah. Really good job. On another note, coming back to the meeting tomorrow night and firearms and prosposals. There's quite a few, I think, in the public that would like to be able to view this. I don't know how we can do it at this late date, but I mean, I, I know there's a lot of delegations. Sarah, are you still there?
Yes.
Yes. So I, but I know there's a lot of folks who want to watch it and cannot. Is this something that we, is this normal to do it this way? Or can, I mean, because there's a lot of public interest, even though there won't be a lot of delegations. I mean, a lot of them don't want to be delegations. So is there anything we can do at this late date?
So the issue is usually public consult, uh, public meeting under the Planning Act. It's legislated under a legislation, right? This is just a public consultation to reach out for feedback. And there could be privacy concerns because these delegations haven't consented to be livestreamed. So at this point, we do have 50 plus. We will keep our website open to prove, or if anyone wants to provide feedback by email to us, we'll keep it open until end of this month to incorporate those feedbacks to present to council.
Public knows here tonight, and I know Counselor Sharp brought it up. You know, what restrictions we have to work under to have, make this work. So that for those who can't, who can't watch, just, just be observers. I think it's important that they know why. That's why I brought that up. Thank you. Thank you for that. And the other question was on the same, on the same issue, I guess counselors are excluded from this meeting as well?
Yes, count, there's going to be no discussion or debate. It's really just open a platform for the public to come and provide their feedback. So the discussion will happen when the report comes on the December 7th meeting. Council was provided the Zoom link so that they could participate, just watch the meeting.
Yeah, so it's, it's a good idea that they can only watch. You wouldn't want any of the politicians to influence or give opinions to the folks that are going to be doing delegations. All right, you've explained everything. I think everyone appreciates that. Thank you.
So just, just a comment on that, possibly in the, in the future. If we do have another public meeting of this type of thing for another issue, we may have to just get everyone that's joining sign a disclaimer that they don't mind being filmed and then it could be live streamed. That may be something to think about down the road, depending on how long we'll be doing virtual meetings for. But it may be something to think about. So seeing no further announcements, just want to say that our next meeting is scheduled for December 7th, 2020, following the committee of the whole. Now we're going to move into closed session under section 39 2C, proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality, Parkland Acquisition, New Horizons, and closed session meeting minutes of November 2nd. Need a mover and seconder to move into closed? Counselor Frake? And Counselor Vardy? Good night, everyone. Or we'll be back into open after to say good night. Moved by Counselor Frake, second by Counselor Vardy. Resolve that council meeting closed session regarding the following under section 2392C, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality, Parkland Acquisition, New Horizons. All in favor? We're now closed. All right, need a mover and seconder to for the closed second, or closed session parkland update? Counselor Vane, Counselor Cadwell? Moved by Counselor Vane, second by Counselor Cadwell. Resolve that the closed session update on Parkland Acquisition, New Horizons be received. All in favor? That's carried. Number 17, the confirming bylaw? Need a mover and seconder? Counselor Dunstall, Counselor Bothwell? Moved by Counselor Dunstall, second by Counselor Bothwell. Resolve that leave be given to introduce bylaw number 20-87 inclusive and that be, same be read a first time. All in favor? That's carried. Need a mover and seconder for second and third reading? Counselor Ritchie, Counselor Frake? Moved by Counselor Ritchie, second by Counselor Frake. Resolve that leave be given to introduce bylaw number 20-87 inclusive, read a first time. Now be read a second and third time and finally passed to the mayor and the town clerk to sign and seal the same. And rule counsel to the contrary notwithstanding. All in favor? That's carried. And meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone. Thank you.